Call.
Reese.
Sure.
Councilmember asked.
Here.
Nelson.
Here.
Davis.
Here.
Childus.
Here.
Brian.
Here.
Butterfield.
Here.
Osmus.
Here.
Beggarly.
Yeah.
Nine presidents, zero ads.
They have to. I am the nation's student of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Any addition to the regions? And the. Delivery too.
Option to approve.
All right.
Emotions.
No emotions.
We got a motion to approve. Do we have a second?
Don't need it, I guess. Sorry.
We got work session.
What's that?
Work session.
Your business. Bruce.
BK. About that.
Yes.
I was looking on the monitor as well, getting a little bit of feedback.
No.
Evening, Mayor, Council. Good to see you all. I do apologize that we didn't get some of these materials to you sooner for your review. We will distribute them after today's meeting. And again, once you've had some time to absorb it, read it, go through it, we can go ahead and come back and discuss any questions and further next steps you have in response to that. Chris, are you going to be, and then, so I hear Bruce Schwartzman, as you met before, with BK room, with Chris Palkovich as well from our office. Hi, Chris. You hear us all right?
Hi. Good evening, everyone. You sound great from my end. Can you hear me?
Loud and clear.
Excellent.
So, Chris, if you want to go ahead and pull up the materials, what we've done is, we, based on the Council's direction and working with led with team, we've done some analysis of looking at Block 50 and options of Block 50, and we've also looked at the auditorium and potential options for auditorium as well. And what we'll do is, we have some overview materials for that, and we'll talk through the information. And again, this is a workshop, so really, we're here to answer your questions, but we'll share the information that we've put together so far. Chris, if you go to the next sheet. So. We looked at the auditorium and walked through it. We've inspected. We've been through it many times. You all have seen it before. You know the facility. You know its uses, its limitations, and you know, you know, it's a nice facility that was built during the WPA era, era of the 20s. It's got some nice characteristics to it. It's just unfortunately not fully utilized, and there's going to have to be an investment into this building if you were to keep it or if you were to repurpose it. And I think it's one of the things that you all have to wrestle with at the end of the day will be, you know, if you do decide to go with City Hall, Block 50, what to do with this building, but that we'll discuss that as well. So the next page really talks about, these were some of the bullet points that were identified in a 2014 study that was done, so roughly, what, nine years ago or so. Lead hazardous materials that were in the basement from the fire range, a good portion of those have been removed, but as we know, there's still some lead that still needs to be remedied. There's some mercury from old electrical panels that that'll have to be taken care of, and that's still an issue that needs to be addressed. The mechanical systems, there was some mechanical work done when the, when the firing range system was revamped and things like that. But if you were to repurpose the entire building or reutilize a lot of the other areas, you've got to address all the mechanical systems. Excuse me. So the mechanical systems will need to be addressed. The electric equipment is outdated, the panel's old, the fact it's got mercury, mercury switchgear and things like this, it clearly has to be, it's very, very outdated and needs to be addressed. It's not, not not in current with code compliance, nor was it back in 2014 either. Fire alarms would need to be installed, building sprinkler, there was a sprinkler main that was installed in the building, but they installed it right in front of it, electrical panel, which is fine because the rail is, it needs to be moved anyway, but it probably wasn't the best place to put the main, but they didn't run sprinklers throughout, but at least they have a line in the building, so it's, it's, it's one step that's done in there. Roofing needs to be addressed. There's some masonry area, masonry on the exterior of the building where it needs to be tuck pointed, some cleanup area that the exterior shell would need to be addressed. If you do utilize the basement, if you utilize the multiple floor in any way, start putting money into the building and rehabbing it, the codes are going to make you make it handicap accessible. So they're going to require an elevator put in to address that. Likewise, all bathrooms and things like that would have to be accessible, things like that. So there's going to be a number of upgrades that would have to occur as part of a building rebuild. I showed you this because really this was confirmation of the things that were found back in 2000. It's really nothing new. It's a lot of information you probably already knew before, but it's still there today. It really hasn't changed much at all. And again, we've walked through, we've looked at the space, there's some good storage space in the building, but not a lot of usable space the way it stands right now. Chris, you want to go to the next page? So. We did talk to State Historic Preservation Office, and it's a love and hate relationship, but honestly, please talk about that. You know, we have a lot of gorgeous old buildings, not just in Minnesota, but around other areas too, and you, you want to use them as much as you can. But you look for a level practicality when you talk to these historic facilities folks, and they have two different people that you talk to over there. The first one we talked to is what I would consider a purist. And she looks at, and we had a long conversation about the facility. On the exterior of the building, it says City Auditorium. So it's clear at the top, it says auditorium. So in her opinion, when this building was built, it was built with the intent of being a city auditorium. And that's, it's not just historically how it looks on the outside, but it's really how it functions as well. Because what I was proposing to her is, to make this work for city offices, would require building a second level within that gym space, and there's more than enough space in there. Looked at it structurally. We've looked at it, you know, if it could lay out how it would work. And so what I was asking her was, what we'd like to do is keep the exterior facade, not touch at all, preserve the, and what the main, uh, westerly facade, that's the main elevation. But we'd be putting a floor in the middle while she thought, as soon as you don't have an auditorium, it's no longer complies with historic guidelines. Now, you haven't taken funds for it. So there is steps to go through to repurpose a building. But you have to go through the state historic steps of basically documenting there what's there, putting a report together, and then let the third preservation office, once, once you go through and put together this document, then they basically allow you to do what you need to do. So she was coming from the extreme side that, no, this is an auditorium, this should not really recognizing that if the city wants to use this for a city hall, that makes sense, then the city should, then the city should have that latitude to do that. So we had a good conversation. We did talk, we showed her diagrams, adding a floor in the middle, which adds another 14,000 square feet. So there's like 14,000 in the basement on the first floor, there'd be another 14,000 on the second level. We reviewed it with our structural, basically what you do is you, and I've done this with other older buildings, is you pump concrete in, you dig found big footings in the building, get a small Bobcat, you get them in that basement. You dig holes, you pour footings, and you bring columns up to support this structure that's in there, because the existing building as it is, wouldn't support that second level. You have to build another structure internal. So there's definitely cost to that. We also talked to her about, you know, if you're going to add offices on the second level, clearly, when you looked at the elevations on the north and south side of the building, there's not a lot of windows. And the last thing you want to do is you move into a building and don't have a lot of that. It's just, you don't want to move into a box. It just is not feel comfortable appropriate for city offices. So we, we talked about that, and she was amenable to adding windows on the, on the sides, opposite of hardware hangs on the, on the side that faces the city hall, on the side that faces the parking lot on the north. It was just an auditorium. So the building converted. And part of the presentation that we'll talk about, we did do a cost estimate. I ran it through some contractors to verify some of these costs. So later on the study, the way we formatted the presentation by is, talk about the auditorium, talk about Block 50, pros and cons of these various items, cost estimates, and kind of next steps. And I, and I think it's, I think the direction is, should be, should be clear enough to hopefully help make some direction on that, learn decisions on this. So the, what we're showing here is the auditorium may be repurposed for city offices. There's about 28,000 square feet. There would be 15,000 square feet on the main level, 14,000 square feet on the second level. The determination is whether you do much with that third level at the top. There's like 2,600 square feet up there. Not that it couldn't be used, but you almost have to wonder what the viability of that 2,600 square feet, you know, must might be better for storage or something else, because technically.
And I'll, and I'll add as well, if, you know, if you're, if you're no longer kind of bound by the state historic or the state preservation guides, I mean, you could look at, you know, cutting in skylights or maybe even adding a center atrium, if you're, you know, you could re-explore the building in kind of a grand way. I mean, there certainly could be more cost there. But it could make it a, a more long-term viable solution.
And so what we're showing up here is a site plan that shows the auditorium. We did look at the idea of if, if once the City Hall would be demolished, that that location where City Hall would be, would be parking for City Hall. So we're, we're showing on that, you know, you could all see on that southern side, and we're, we're, Chris is moving the hand. That's where the existing City Hall is. That building would be taken down, and that would be built out to provide parking. And I think, Chris, you got about 35 spaces or so?
Yeah, 34 on the, the east side, and I've got 18 on the west side, but we have to, we have to relook at how many are, you know, owned by the businesses versus, versus public land.
So the idea was, again, you know, we might pop out an inch, it's maybe in part the council chambers pops out a little bit to give a little definition to reading on that side of the building. But other than that, the west elevation would pretty much stay the way it is. I think there's some window replacements, other exterior treatments should be done, but we would plan on adding windows right now to the building. And again, the program that we identified for City Hall was about 31,000, almost 32,000 square feet, but of that 32,000 square feet, going from memory, almost 8,000 square feet, 79, somewhere in there, was for City Hall vehicles, right? So if you backed out the City Hall vehicles, the two floors, the way they are, theoretically, the 28,000 square feet, which should be, should accommodate City Hall functions. Then it's a question of, you build something outside to accommodate those vehicles, or do you leave them parked outside or things like this? But it doesn't provide for any indoor parking on this site. Any questions about this site plan? Again, we can always come back to. I don't want to have any questions about the site plan, but.
Have you ever talked to the executive director, former executive director Dale? He used to have an office in that building. And I talked to him about a month ago, and he said, he's got more information on available grants in his files. He has really encouraged us to talk with him.
He was, he was the Vence director.
Okay. And then. And there are, there are a number of grants. You're absolutely right. There's a lot of grant programs out there that if you go after them, the state and federal grants for potential historic renovation.
That's what I was going to ask you. You said state historical, isn't it also a national?
It is. It is. And so the, when we talked to about them, they basically were referring to national guidelines for some of this work. The thing that might be difficult, that's not that we couldn't go down there and do a little more research, but I'm not sure how they, if you're, if you're looking to turn it into city offices, we might get the same kind of pushback we got from the one lady that we talked to at the state, who was, I mean, what I called more of a purist, who said, it's an auditorium, it has to stay an auditorium. So you might get grant money, but the grant money might be historically redo windows to redo some of the stuff that it has, but not turn it into a city hall. And again, we could, we could explore that more. It's an option, see what's available out there. We did a similar study for, I think for, for Pennington County up north that owned the City Hall project, or an auditorium that we were looking at, very, very similar in many, many ways. And there was a number of grants. But at the end of the day, they realized it wasn't getting the space of building, even with spending its money. And the other thing you got to realize, it's like, it's like receiving money from a lot of federal or whatever organizations. It comes with a little bit of, of additional requirements, energy sustainable requirements, certain prevailing wage, higher rates that you might not pay if you were just using a regular bid process. So, but again, I'd be glad to look at that research a little bit more if that's something that's valuable to you.
Bruce, the question. As I look at the auditorium, the possibility of making it some sort of city hall. Are there steel girders for the roof?
The big ceiling? Oh, steel process, yeah.
And they are 100 years old.
They're, they're in good shape though. They're not going anywhere. Yeah, you know, I'd say sometimes I have more faith in some of the old buildings than newer buildings. It was solidly built. It's not going anywhere. There's no, we looked up a wall, so you know, a lot of times you look for movement or cracking and things like this. You know, if the foundation was not quite set, or there were foundation issues, you see cracking and movement. Really didn't see anything. They're not going to go anywhere. So long as the roof is maintained, as soon as the roof stops being maintained, you start getting a lot of leaks in there and a lot of water penetration. That's what will cause the deterioration. As soon as you get rust starting. It's a solid building.
They know who built that building.
I know it was done back in the WPA era, so.
Well, that's what I'm wondering, who actually built it?
I don't know.
I think they were all WPA con people, so they were just probably just one sole contractor that they own the workforce here in the county. Those that needed to learn some skilled laborers.
Exactly.
That's what it was for.
Okay.
So even with the leakage that we've seen in the water damage that's taken place in that building, no concerns?
Really what you're seeing right now is minor deterioration. It's leaking on the walls, you're seeing some paint, you're seeing some stained areas. You're not seeing black mold or anything, any severe deterioration, things like that. So the plaster on the ceilings is starting to go, you know, clearly that needs to be opened up and ventilated, but from what we're seeing top, on the top of the surface, it, a lot of times, as soon as you start to see the black spots, you know you've got black, so we're not really seeing. We think there's, we think there probably is still some potential asbestos, like we talked about, we talked about the mercury. There could be asbestos as well. We think there's some ceiling tile and maybe even some floor tile, you know, because when you see the smaller, like nine by nine floor tile, a lot of times those have asbestos particles in them. So, but again, that's, that's not, that's not insurmountable to have removed. There's a lot of companies that do it. It's fairly, fairly common. It's just identifying it. In the estimate, we did bill its cost for some of that as well. Showing us all kinds of cool stuff, Chris. Yeah, so that's a bad corner too, the one you just showed. If you want to go into that for a second.
Sure, sure. Yeah, I'm trying to show the bad stuff, but it's all the other stuff that they still have open.
Yeah, see, that's a bad corner where it's, but I, I don't believe, when we pushed on that, it wasn't, it wasn't to the point where you could push through it. I think it's just staining that's occurring in that area.
Chris, did you have any pictures of the basement, that basement corner? Yeah.
No, no, I don't think so, Leslie.
Okay.
I'm sure looking through. This isn't probably not quite what you're looking for. This is just the foundation walls.
I think there was one picture, Chris, that you had that was in a corner where the water was.
Yeah, that one there is under the.
Is that where the furnace was?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yes, where the furnace is.
It just, a question looking forward. I don't know where, what decision we think, but we had money, so decided to reduce things on the roof to repair those, to maybe do that in slight time.
I would give it until the spring. The only reason I'm delaying is, first off, you're try to get a contractor to do anything for the winter, you're paying a premium for them to get it, handle anything at this time of year. You're going to wait till warm weather. I don't think also, again, when you see the numbers or some of the information, I do want to set up a meeting with you, Leslie, go through that one more time and just go through it a little more detail, but you're going to spend some money in this building. At the end of the day, I'm not sure where it's going to get you. So we'll talk about later, but the question is, what do you, if you don't use it, what is the city, what are your options for that? So I mean, the, the memorial room and whatnot in there, I mean, it's got some great elements to it. Building, it's just, the question is, you know, potentially, there's, the city puts some money into it to restore it and at least preserve it. The question is, how much further are you taking? You could address some of the fire suppression system issues of minimal amount of electric, the roof, and really probably get by for quite a while and allow people to continue to use the gymnasium and things like that. But again, that would buy you time and it would allow you to use the facility to some extent. Over time, the council's got to wrestle with the fact, do you keep it or do you sell it, or what the options are for that.
Thank you.
But if. Thanks, Chris. You want to go to the next one?
Sure.
So the other things that we've prepared that Chris will now start to show you is, so Chris and our, our development, what is Julie's title, Chris? I always forget. Other business development, it's, she's, she's a.
Director of Pre-Development Services, or something like that.
Kind of type.
So, yeah, go ahead, go ahead.
So Julie Luxon with our office, and she's a realer, a real commercial real estate individual, and she's done this for years and whatnot. And we, we had some great conversations. We started to look at Block 50 and, and what our pre-development team is, is what they do is they'll look at a site and they'll assess what kind of housing you get on that site, whether it's a senior, is it affordable, is it market rate, what, what does the market yield? And then what does the footprint look like with how you could build housing? And Julie talked to Leslie and Chris, and they had a conversation. And so, you know, this property would be a great development property to bring housing potentially into downtown core. Again, the more people you bring to downtown, the more they're spending money, they're supporting businesses, the more it generates strength of, of business unity in that core. Well, they talked to some developers, and sure enough, we found a developer that we worked with, because we had worked with development companies all around the country. They found a developer that's very interesting, which gave us a lot of hope that, you know what, this could be a really good viable option for the city in pursuit. It's, we don't know how that would roll out yet, and that's part of the thing we'll talk about, where there's, and I think some of you toured Columbia Heights in the cities, and Columbia Heights was a kind of a, kind of a similar thing. They built a city hall as part of a housing project. But again, we've got an option that shows almost, we got one that shows the housing, the city hall kind of embedded within it, another where the city hall is almost separate from the site. So I think there's benefits, there's pros and cons to both. What we'll do is, we'll show you this. We have pros and cons. We kind of racked our brains on the pros and cons, and we came up with some, but it's not like an exhaustive list, because it seemed to be kind of self-evident what we were coming up with. So we'll go through the pros and cons. We have the cost estimate that we did, and again, we'll talk through that as well, and then kind of some of the next steps. But Chris, do you want to talk through some of this information?
Yeah, sounds great. Thanks, Bruce. So we, we start off by just doing a Block 50 site analysis, just getting a, a understanding of the impacts primarily of, of the, the different corners and the experiences of those different corners, and then just understanding, you know, the, the adjacencies of what, what buildings are around us as well, and what impact there will be. And this is kind of a, the, the reason we do this is a fewfold of, if you're going to have the City Hall, that certainly you're going to want a strong civic impact in whatever, you know, whatever location is selected, you know, you're going to, this is going to be a 50 to 100-year building. You, you want to consider how to, how to make it a prime piece of real estate. And then additionally, how, how does the, if we're going to merge housing with it, how do those two uses come together overall? And how are they integrated or separated? And then as a, had you put up a parking structure, how is that shared or separated as well? And then lastly, just, you know, as everyone knows, the site here, it, it does have a few unique constraints with the, with the law office and the dental clinic, you know, it's still there. It's, we, we've looked at those options of how to work the building around, you know, potential building around how those may work. And then also considered, you know, maybe long-term future, if, if you were able to, at some point in the future, be able to, be able to get, you know, be able to have an option to purchase those at some point down the road. But we certainly don't want to just, you know, blow them out, because they're, they're, you know, they're a piece of the, the city fabric and, and part of the, part of the city. So going into the, looking at just the, the corner and the, the impacts overall, just, just starting at the corner of Fifth and Trot. I'm calling it corner one, just for, for this study. And what, what's, what's nice about corner one is the adjacency to the library and then the, the overall connection with, with Fifth Street as well. That, you know, pairing the potential City Hall with the library would be, would be a very nice use. Alternatively, we're, we're looking at not only just the location of City Hall, but we're considering where would the main housing entry be? And then we're also considering where a potential office, retail, or, you know, potential small clinic space could be as well. So that could maybe give the opportunity of, you know, if the law office or the dental clinic, if, if they were excited about the project, maybe they could move into the new space as, as things, you know, when, when things were complete. We'll, we'll show that a little bit more. The corner two is, is interesting. It is, you know, it is hampered by the law office overall, but it can still have a nice connectivity to fit. It, it has really nice, just kind of visual connectivity to the, the corner green space of the, the courts building. And that's something we definitely are considering. And then, you know, just the, the way that the, the rest of the one or two-story building is going to go down the street, it has some nice, nice viability. And then lastly, corner three, kind of, you know, through studying with the post office and the surface parking and kind of the side of the hospital, it's, it's, it's a little lesser, you know, for maybe a civic opportunity. That it doesn't seem like maybe that's the right spot for City Hall in, in, you know, from this study. And maybe I could, you know, through other opinions, we could certainly continue to talk through it. But the, you know, that, that corner of the three seems to have the least potential to, to kind of have a little bit of the wow factor, even though Fourth Street is, got some nice retailers, you get, you know, move further north. So option one. Option one, I'm starting down this, this, this corner here, is just a really, a really big picture of how option one is being developed of, or the ideas behind option one. It was really to, option one is trying to do, do it in a clean way, that the City Hall could truly almost be its own standalone building. There'd be two stories here with a, it'd have a nice glassy atrium that's, you know, spilling light down, down both levels. And then there would be the, the housing building, and the housing building would integrate all of the parking into it. So the, you know, there, there need to be, you know, whatever, whatever relationships set up, if it's condoization or leasing of those, of those parking stalls, and that, and that would be a piece of it overall. And then and then overall, the, I'll jump to the first floor to give you just a little bit more, better sense of kind of what we're looking at overall here. So parking would be integrated. We have, there, there would be four levels of parking through this, the, with two levels for City Hall and the public, and two levels for the housing. And we're looking at give or take 120 units on, of, of what we were trying to work to develop. So it, up, starting up at, at corner two that we talked about, you'd have City Hall having, having its own presence up here. Council chambers could have got it a little bit angled here, you know. We, we don't know what the architecture would be, but it, it's kind of framing itself very nicely with that, that green corner of the courts building right across the way. And then, as I mentioned, if there's an opportunity, as maybe the law office something changes, there'd be an opportunity to pick that up, and that could be a future green space. And that would be a, a nice way to, to complement the, the overall corner. The, there'd be parking access on, on both Fourth and Fifth, and there'd be, the, what we do is, we'll, we'll explain this a little more, but we'd sandwich the housing parking kind of above and below the private, or above and below the public parking. So the, the housing parking would have a garage door and a fob, so they'd have some security to go to their lower level. Go ahead.
Number of parking spaces he's voted both public and private?
Chris, did you hear that? Would you review public and private parking spaces?
Yes, so we are, so what we've been aiming for is, in this, in this tabulation, we've been, the use we were looking at was a 55-plus use for, for the building. And the, part of the reason for choosing 55-plus is usually there's a little lesser of a parking need on that versus like a, a typical multifamily building. Where a typical multifamily building, you might see, you might need 1.1 and 1/2 stalls per unit or even more. A lot of times in the 55-plus buildings, you, you aim for about one stall per unit overall. So the, the version we're looking at had 100. So the, the version we're looking at had 111 stalls, or, excuse me, 111 units. So we're providing 111 resident stalls. The city hall, for the, for the staff trucks and vehicles need 12 stalls. And then we, we put a number as, as we recognize we're taking away public stalls here, that we'd need at least 50 public stalls. So of that, of that city hall and public parking, we, we have a, a goal of 62, and we're providing 77 right now, and 111 for the residential. So there, there would be some overlap as well, which, which is nice when you have a shared parking structure like this, so that way when there'd be lesser needs from the, maybe from the, the city side, the, you know, guests could use that parking, or, or vice versa. But we have 173, it's kind of the number we have, we're providing 183 right now. A couple more points on this level that the, we, at Trot and Fifth is where we have the, the lobby and the amenity space, and there'd be a, 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 a nice green courtyard along Trot. And then we have a, a retailer dental clinic on Fourth and Trot as well, you know, with, you know, with the idea potentially if the, you know, if the dental office would, would, would choose to move, or, or the law office would choose to move, that they could take this corner, and maybe at some point in, in the future, that this space could be opened up to be a larger green space. But again, we're not trying to force any building up here.
Chris, there are a quick question. I think you've got 18 spaces around the existing city hall.
No, he was asking Block 50.
Block 50 and so forth. There's a lot of parking at site as well.
What is the width of the space between the parking structure and the church?
15, 15 feet right now.
So there's some of their parking that they use right along their building would still be intact?
In this version, not necessarily. I guess I'd say no in this version, in the other, in my Option Two, yes.
Okay.
Well, they, some, Chris, I pulled up the area, they do have parking literally adjacent to the church on the south side. I mean, we wouldn't touch that.
Maybe we, maybe we misplaced the property line on it, or versus what, what is the church's versus ours?
Yeah, we should be looking at that, but there's, there's, there's literally parking rolling alongside with a small, you know, it's all angle parking, so we could double check. I, I think that parking is definitely.
In, in our, in our Option Two, we, we definitely are recognized that they, they're, they're going to have some parking needs and trying to respond to that overall. Okay, just finish Option One here really quick, just a couple more pages. This is, the second floor is still city and public parking, would have direct access into the city hall. You can see that council chambers and the main atrium would be two-story spaces here, the upper, upper offices through here. And then the residential building, as we get up to the, the fourth floor of the building, would have amenity spaces in the terrace looking to the south as well, so it gets a nice sunlight in, in their usable space, and they have 50, 53 feet, so there could be some, some nice amenities up there for the, the future residents. And then just a couple building sections to help people understand the, you know, we are one level below grade, and then the three levels above grade, and then wrapping with the housing here. And then this is really where we're talking about kind of this cleaner break here, where the city hall is over here on the, the, the north side. There could be a, you know, a property line right here, and then how the, the residents, you know, would be on the side, and the, the parking would just have the whatever shared relationship there. Any other questions on, on this version, or I could show the, the alternate version?
Again, this is a really high-level conception. Chris and the team did it just to see what would fit on the site, how it might lay out, how many units they could get on there, because the way the developers, of course, look at is they're able to create enough units to make it biologically, financially successful for everyone involved. And so, how many units was it total, Chris?
We've 111 right now. Our, our goal is 120. So, and, and things, and that changes quite a bit depending on what unit sizes they want, if they want more one-bedrooms or more two-bedrooms, you know, impacts what the, what the overall count is. So that's why it, although it's, it's hard-lined, you know, you can see the spaces, we, we really think of the adjacencies and the, the relationships of the, the buildings together, but we haven't really taken it to the next level of development of how any of the internal spaces work. You know, as we're developing options, we don't want to, until we get more feedback, we don't want to develop those areas too much further.
And also, there's kind of a sweet spot with how tall you can go with these facilities. So not only is there city zone, it's for implementation, things like that, but when you build out a wood construction things, there's kind of this five-level deal that works out really well, and I think that's, thinking about the economics of building this, kind of keeping it to a height that makes sense, correct, Chris?
Correct, yes. Okay, well, I will go to the other option. So the, the other option, we thought of it in a little bit different way, that, that we thought, I'll go here. That we look to integrate the two a, a little bit more, and, and really bring City Hall along Fifth. And we create a, a large public plaza at Fifth and Trot here. The council chambers could be, could be down here right off of that with the entry. And then we have City Hall coming across. We could, we could look at moving this drive to get this to be more contiguous space here. We do, I'll jump to Level Two, so you can see the difference really quick. So City Hall does connect all the way over the top of this space as well, and there, you know, there is the stair, maybe there'd be another elevator, again, haven't developed every, each, each bit of the space yet. But it really, what, what's interesting here in, in 3D, we, we thought of it of, you know, thinking of the relationship to the height along Fifth of the other buildings, that, that the first floor would be about, you know, kind of extra-tall space, might be 15 or 16 feet for a floor. And then with the second floor, we, we'd have a building that might be 27, 28 feet tall that we have stepped the, the main building back from that. So the city hall portion would not only kind of slides out of it and, and has this unique entry point, so you can visually identify it as kind of a separate piece within the larger block, but it also relates to the, the existing buildings that are there, so that this building isn't maybe coming in feeling quite as tall.
This, this is assuming that the law office is out of there?
I know the law office is still there.
It is?
Yeah. The green block in the middle, still.
So we still have the law office here, and then, you know, dental office, again, the, the future, future green space, we can, we can build around it and, you know, leave them as is. But again, we are looking this time as the, the housing entry being at Trot and Fourth, and then a, a retail dentist location along Fourth as well.
I just thought of, like, with the, the past picture that you had, I thought the building went all the way to the road.
Sure, sure. The, the other thing with this, rather than four levels of parking, we, we get it to work in three levels of parking in, in this, in this instance. So one level below grade for the housing, we have this, the, the public parking at street level here, and then another parking level for the residents above this. And then we do maintain some of the church stalls there. You can see the, the, the ramping up and down here into the parking garage overall. Second floor. I flipped, I flipped to this one for a moment, but City Hall kind of really coming down Fifth, like a nice contiguous space through here, and then two heights, you know, double-height space for the, the entry atrium and for the council chambers. And then utilizing, we did this on the other one, I didn't point out, but where we have the parking, utilizing residential to, to really kind of, to, to put it, the parking to feel more mid-block, so that way it'll feel more active, whenever the, you know, whenever this may be a green space, and this, this building would be cleared away, then, then you'd have something nice to look at. You wouldn't just be looking at the parking garage beyond it. But, you know, those units would be a little limited until that point would happen. And then up, up on third floor is where their amenity space would be, and you can see this, that here's some of the areas where the building is stepping back for the city hall below, and then we're building on top of the parking. Go ahead.
Chris, hold on one sec, please, Mayor.
I'm just sitting here, and when I talked to you at the beginning, before we started, I thought I was going to see a concept that we're going to build City Hall, that's it.
Well, and the first option you could, first option, because of the way it's located, you could build, absolutely. And that's what we want to talk about, these two options, pros and cons of these two options.
Yeah.
As well, because it, one of the, one of the approaches would be, once we get the council's kind of direction or fever on, on which option makes the most sense, the next, one of the next steps is really talk to one of these developers, and see their interest in being engaged as well. So we showed two options, but I know I have my preference. It's not my preference, though, because it's not my building, it's all yours, so I want to make sure we didn't go through that. But we do have, Mayor, we do have one that's totally City Hall by itself. Yeah, this one, if the way, if that were built, Chris, will you go back one second? So if that were built, you could build a city hall on that kind of northern section of the site, still retain all the parking around it until the developer came to do the rest of the building. You'd have to do some sheet piling and things to, to, to construct right next to it, but that can be done. So.
Okay, we, we, we looked at the, the third floor here, and then just kind of the, the section of how these, how these pieces are kind of working together. You know, really trying to integrate the parking more towards the center of the site to limit its impact on the walkability and experience around, around the block overall, and, but still provide convenient parking for both the, both City Hall, the public, and for the residents overall. Those are the, that, those are the different, those are the different options. Are there any questions on Option Two?
That's the parking for Option Two.
Sure. So on Option Two right now, we are at 105 units right now. So we have, in, in our, same math as the requirements before, we would need 167 stalls, and we're right at 167 stalls right now. And that would be 62 for City Hall and the public.
So it sounds like we're a little less parking for Option One, correct?
Option One had, I think, 13 additional stalls beyond what we're kind of putting as the requirement. And it did have, Option One had the fourth level of parking, where Option Two is, was trying to do three levels of parking to see if there could be some cost efficiency with doing that rather than four.
Is there any benefit to going down as well, building a lower park, a lower?
Usually, an additional level lower, it's not quite double the cost, but it is quite a bit more costly. Like, a stall below grade can cost, just one level down can cost, you know, depending on how it's done in the site layout, but just a $25,000 to $30,000 per stall. And if you go an additional level down, depending on the, what kind of soil retention and other things are needed, it can be another $10,000 plus per stall.
What was the total parking on Option One? I'm sorry.
No problem. Option One was 188.
And so there's more spaces on Option One. It sounds like there's more units on Option One as well, right?
It is. It has six additional units. It's at 111.
So with Option One versus Option Two, you have more parking and more units, and you can construct the city hall independently of the housing.
Yes. I think the one, for, for how we have it laid out right now, the, the one kind of minor drawback of Option One right now is, you know, with, with, with the law office as the immediate neighbor, you know, you, you'll still get nice street presence, but it's, it's going to feel, you know, it, it won't feel as open and spacious until that, that would potentially happen in the future, but.
Yeah, but it, it, it makes the construction a lot more-
Oh, much, much cleaner. You don't have to, you don't have to, you know, wait for a housing developer and connect with them to make it happen. You could, you could proceed.
I was just going to say, so there's, for Option One, there's basically one parking place for each apartment?
Yes, for, for both of the options, yes.
So then if there's two people living in one apartment, and they have two cars, there's on the street?
Do they, I know they handle that differently. You handle the part of the housing stuff, or, Chris, do they, do they have the units or parking available that they sell or rent, or or is it just you only have one per stall in there, or one per unit?
Um, you, you know, it really varies depending on the market analysis of, of how many stalls to provide overall. You, you'll find that in the 55-plus that, usually maybe it's, thanks to mention the one-to-one is kind of the baseline. I think the most you would do is maybe 1.1, 1.2 stalls per unit would be kind of the, the top end of what we see at, at a 55-plus building, because you're just not, you're just not seeing as much parking in it. And, and oftentimes, the 55-plus building, the, the average age in the, those buildings are, are usually in the upper 70s, mid to upper 70s. So it's, it's, you know, it's not typically, you know, somebody that's in their late 50s that's still working, that's typically moving into these type of facilities. So that there seems to be a little less car demand, is kind of where I was going with that.
But you're, it would still be marketed as a 55-plus facility, right?
Yes, yes.
Thoughts between Option Two and Option Three? You know, does it, one seem more viable than two questions? And again, this is the final plan, which is, I think there's some big things to me, is, is, you know, one biggest thing that I, that I see in Option One is the ability to build city hall and better housing. Because then that allows, you know, what, what you're going to develop, I understand, one of the first steps would be to sit down with the developer, make sure that whatever concept plan was being developed works with what they, they would do, and then put a contract and an agreement in place to, to know that they're coming along to do this project. Then the question is, timing-wise, the two might end up timing out pretty close together. If the developer is ready to move, reality is the developmental plans for those, for the, the housing project and the city hall might track in such a way that will allow them to happen, where there's really no disruption that could occur simultaneously, which would create less problems as far as adjacencies, connections. But to me, Option One seems to be a strong possibility. Now, unless you all said, no, we really want the city hall to be here, you know, here or here, then we'd have to go back to the drawing board and see what we could do. But that seemed to work well to make both housing and city hall work.
There's some things on Option Two that I like with that. One thing that, just a concern, the space to preserve the integrity of the battle church area, I think, is a concern. I think there are more, I mean, there's some positives there too, or access to parking spaces on, with that. Just that space, what it would look like if you're coming out the back door there, and I actually like some of that corner stuff with City Hall on, on, most of the library there too, so I can see positives in both, but it's hard to see from this distance, Stuart. Be anxious to see the drawings.
No, we'll give, we'll give this to you too. And, you know, again, that's something still we can pursue with the developer. If, if, but if we, if there's a desire to explore both options, we can do that, and see, see what they'll be feel as well. We just want to make sure.
This property line goes right up to the parking lot. All that parking lot is city's.
City's, so, so I think we, we want to try and-
Looking on the GIS there.
I'm aware, I, yes, aware of that. I just don't see it being doable to build up to the property line. There has to be some space.
Yes, there's some diagonal parking on the, on the south side of the church, and there's the access drive. I think- I think you would want to try to respect that and maintain that as much as possible.
Right.
So.
And this is assuming that dental office is going to be more, the current dental office will.
No, it, it, it's really, it may be, we, it's just could be like Chris's, I didn't, at some point in time you could purchase it, make it more of a green space or open, then you took it to the housing. But at this point, they, they were showing the dental clinic still there.
What they do now.
Where the, what the, you know, like.
Their parking lot too.
Yep, yep.
Cause theirs is actually just around there. They don't have, own any parking either. What you see of the building is actually their lot.
Everybody's using cities parking lot right now.
Correct.
Yeah, original drawing is thinking also had that corner out from fourth and open as a parking lot.
Yes. When we originally saw this drawing, where the pink is on that map right there, was left open as a parking lot for future development.
A year, two years ago?
The original, no.
Just like, just three months ago.
The drawing that we saw, the first drawing we saw as a concept with the block fifty did not finish those, that corner.
Yeah, you're right, because there was another, there was another proposal on the table one point time, another developer. Right, they, they had a very conceptual.
Correct.
Because the hospital uses, I think the people who go in the dental clinic and the.
Answers.
Um, not so much the cancer center, uh, and health access, I think is on that, or park in, park, use some of the space.
What's the current capacity of the parking lot on block?
I, I, I don't know offhand. Yeah, I, I don't remember the count. Our, our studies last year, I can picture to pull up our studies from last year. We, we had around there.
Two eighteen.
Over two hundred.
Two eighteen.
Eighteen.
So going from two eighteen to like fifty.
And it's used, it's used about sixty percent.
So sometimes that is a bit.
So who's the study?
This is the study that came from S R.
Yeah.
Okay. So. Twenty thirteen, I'm, I'm just going to address the elephant in the room. Um, I think we're on the same page.
Right.
Um. I, I don't think we're close to approving a development on that property. And part of that is when I think of who utilizes that parking lot, we have people from the library that utilize it. You have the dental office, you have the hospital, you definitely have the church. We've gotten a lot of feedback from people from the church. And when you have events downtown, like if there's, um, a play at the, the barn, um, people park there. You still have downtown employees that would park there. I, I don't see the advantage of taking out all of that parking. I thought we were going to come down to a decision of city hall in that location in the north or the auditorium, and we were going to talk about those costs. Now I can also appreciate and understand the viability of the downtown and having housing. I totally understand that. But I look at an area like where, uh, just to the north of Weack and I look at that church and I look at that other building that's right there. And I think that's an area, those are two un, unused buildings. That would be a perfect spot for a fifty-five plus apartment complex. Or, and I guess, I'm sure the hospital doesn't have the appetite for it, but you would have the area right across just straight to the west of the fire department. If you want to talk about the whole parking area, um, a complex could go there. That could still, they could do more ramps then, or more parking for Rice Hospital staff. As far as proximity to the downtown. But I'm not, um, right now thinking that building, uh, an apartment complex on block fifty is in the best interest of the city.
That's why I asked the question, could we just build for city hall?
I know, I'm throwing the rest out.
Right, and I, I'm in agreement too, that I, I, I'm a, I'm a long way away from anywhere close to anything other than parking at block fifty is what should be there. Uh, it's, it's utilized by, by far too many things and, you know, Vicky's comment too about like, well, what if you have more than one car? Well, now we just lost another public space, like, or they're on the street somewhere, like. I don't see it happening.
Well, I was contacted by pasture when this first concept first came up, totally against it. I'm on that side, you know? I don't care if you're Catholic, women or Protestant, whatever. A church is there to benefit to people. And if city has to give up a little parking spots for the church to maintain, maintain, so they have. I'm, I'm on the church's side. Did parking, let the church access, access spots.
I'm still open to it, but I think it has to have some strengths to not consume, consume the yard. I mean, the hospital is tall next to it. It could handle another building like that on that block, um, with that, um. I, I'm, I'm not ruling it out, but, um, I like the incorporation of the, of the city into that, the place that we went to, where, where'd we go?
Omni Heights.
Omni Heights, um, was amazing. Um, I think it was very, very creative and very open-minded, very futuristic, very with that. But I, I, I can't, as I said, I can't see the details with this one yet either. But the space that behind Bethel church to me is an issue, um, for, for that. Um, if there's spaces for Bethel to park in the parking lot on Sundays, then how do they get from here to there, or space for the hospital to do that? Is there a way to do that?
Then are we kind of in consensus though, that this is still an option for city hall? I'm not worried about the rest of the development, but as far as city hall, is this still? Just for city hall, not for, and don't worry about the rest of it, but that's where I thought we were going to hear numbers. Cause at one point.
Yeah, you are.
Talking roughly ten million for a small building.
That's, that's coming, because like, as Bruce said, that was the party agenda. You see these sites first and then the numbers are coming last, so.
Okay, I, I was just, I'm just, I'm, there's a part of me, it's like, when I said, I don't feel like we're on the same page. I see B K V spent a lot of time and, uh, to develop a lot of proposals with this housing complex, which at this point, um, I don't see as an option, but it's good to be visionary. I get it.
I, I'm, I'm with you on that. I don't see that either, because I'm on the Main Street committee. We met with all the property owners downtown. They don't want anything in the parking lot. They don't want anything there, because yes, there was a parking study and it showed there's empty spots, but a lot of times it's full. And I know when I had my shop down there, it was hard to find somewhere to park. So you're going to this lot and it's full, you're going to a different lot and it's full. And then customers want to go to your shop and they leave because there's.
I'm, and I think I hear more people telling me they need more parking downtown. In my personal experience, when I go downtown, is I do work in downtown. I mean, so, and it'd be hard for me to imagine this is the best block that we can find in the city to, to build city hall. I mean, and, and I totally agree with Julie and, and Bruce, you and your team did amazing work. I love the concepts. But we misled you, you know, I think, to think that block fifty is going to be able to hold all of that.
So a parking, parking ramp has been talked about in this community since the eighties, nineties, um, and, and the question that who's going to pay for it? How is it going to be funded? Are you going to pay to park in it on a regular basis? And, um, you know, with, nobody's pulled the trigger, you know, to do that, but, um, as, if downtown is going to continue to grow, parking ramp is probably the only way to satisfy some parking needs downtown too. And, you know, what do we want downtown? More housing, more businesses, or a parking lot? Um, you know, I'm, I'm not sure.
My understanding of what we're going to get tonight was.
It, and.
Auditorium building inside of it and block fifty, city hall.
And personally, our first drawing out at where the community center is, I'd like to see some updated numbers if, if we build out there. I, I still think we had a viable option, option there and we didn't pull the trigger and I still think it's viable out there.
Community center. Build a community center in city hall, all that, by rounds.
That's a pathway and I, 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 I just see that that's still an option for city hall. So if we're going to get numbers for this, how hard is it to update the numbers for, for going there?
Not to do.
Not, not, not our goal. We just have to re-study the massing and just make sure we have the site, which was really what we looked at earlier. And, and believe me, this is what we do, these kinds of studies. And it's good to vet out some of these conversations. Doesn't offend me the least little bit. I know it doesn't, Chris, either. We went off track a little bit. We, I think it's because we thought that there were, that there was a development interest on that site. It's something that, that development interest was something that the council was kind of on board with too, because.
You're right.
If they were going to purchase the block, they were going to do what they want with it anyway. You know, we, so the city were to have sold it, it would have been developed.
It is still on the Renaissance zone and still a block that the E D C is working hard to develop, so. You know, is pointing that out that it is on the Renaissance zone, so can we take it off?
Yeah, that's worth the conversation.
Is there a developer interested again? I mean, the developer that was interested backed off, but.
Well, he only benefited from just the interest rate, so yeah, interest rates drop, he's going to be back at the table.
So what's our responsibility to provide adequate parking in downtown?
I think you asked that two months ago.
I asked it, or do.
We have not.
Well, I mean, cause there's some businesses who have bought space for parking or their needs. Others, and there isn't a parking requirement or, or the businesses downtown to provide space.
I can tell you, if you have a parking lot, people will park there at parking lot.
Or I know that, there's signs up, there's signs up everywhere, but, um, what is our responsibility? You've got something.
We have to the councils.
Yeah, it's up to the council what your responsibility is. But we have a couple of property owners that own all sorts of buildings downtown that don't have parking lots that are private businesses, um.
And the, the property owners downtown want higher parking fines. So that's just outside.
They're going to give. Oh, and why? If you talk wrong about Barbara, she wants it lower.
That was five dollars, so you. Lower than, lower zero, which he's had it now here for a few months, but.
I bet a lot of, I guess, got a lot of parking lot across the treaters.
So.
There's a two hour, maybe two hours, you gotta go up there. Well, let's get back to Bruce.
Yep.
I mean, it, I don't know, hearing the conversation almost made, you know, you're right, this is a city have, city probably has no responsibility. We do a lot of planning work around lots of different cities and you probably have no real responsibility to buy parks. It's, 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 it's if you're doing it to try to help businesses, help promote other things in downtown. I mean, this, this block could go, the site could go a level down, this parking could go a level greater, this fully parked, you know, with, except for maybe a city hall. I mean, it could be more parking on that block, but it would just increase the cost of the structure. But you could provide more parking, that's viable option. And we could go a little taller. We could probably go to a steel stud construction instead of wooden stud uh, to some extent, and it would allow us to go higher. So we could go taller, it's just a more expensive structure if, if parking were something you really wanted.
I'm hearing as majority of their council saying, I'll touch wood.
Good. So.
I, I think it has to be there, right? We're, we, we're concerned right now, but the right development came with, I, I don't know that we can, we're not moderating tonight, so.
It's our concepts. Please take it as that.
So Chris showed there in the, in the plan, you could move that city hall wherever you wanted on the site. You know, it could be on the corner across from the library. It really could fit, you know, you could move it to that southeast corner or south, southwest corner rather, excuse me. And, you know, I mean, it would fit fine in that corner if you want to put it there and it's still, still preserve parking to the north and to the east as well. So that, you know, city hall could still fit there, so it still works on any, any kind of corner on that site. Um, I think locating it up where we showed previously towards the north does give you future other development options where this, where it could be. So that's, that's really options for this site. I don't, I think the pros and cons list that we developed, Chris, if you go to that. So we looked at, at the pros and cons of the auditorium site versus the, uh, block fifty. And what we saw for a pro, so looking at the first one was to repurpose the remodel of the existing auditorium. The pro that we saw was the reuse of the existing building. The city is reusing building. Cons we saw will require review and coordination with state or store preservation office, which we know that's going to be a process that has to go through, because it is on the national historic preservation. Um, extensive remodeling wouldn't be required if it was the city hall, it's an auditorium. So there's a lot of space that basically gut and remodel a lot of those areas. One-site parking wouldn't be available. So it's a multi-phase project and then you remodel the auditorium, move your city offices into the auditorium and then demolish the existing city hall so you could pave that site and then open up that site. So it doesn't require some, some, uh, phasing and, and at some point in time, there wouldn't be any one-site parking until the city hall was demolished. That's what we really kind of came up with the pros and cons for that site. The block fifty site for our city hall, the pros we saw were a new build, which provides more opportunity on the exterior design as well as the interior flexibility of laying out spaces, because you're not as confined as much. You really can do a lot more with what you want as far as a layout. Um, there's ample area for site parking on that site because of the size of it. The con that we mentioned was the, the use, uh, and ownership and the repair of the existing auditorium. That if you build a new city hall, you, you can, you can sell the existing city hall, I can demolish it, can have this site for parking, whatever, but you're still going to have the auditorium. So at some point in time, there's either investment in that or you sell it or something has to happen to the auditorium. If you decide to keep it for any extended period of time, at the very minimum, the roof needs to be done. You know, and that's a five hundred thousand dollar plus or plus minus investment just to get the roof done. So then on the cost estimates. So the top one shows the new city hall.
Can you blow that up?
Yeah.
No, we, we better see this.
No, I'm defined.
So you're right, so, and, and these were, we looked at, no, scroll up, Chris, yeah, thanks. Um, so.
So I guess if I get a cleaner version, but I don't have it open.
No, that's fine, that's fine.
Yeah.
Um, so the top line is based on the building area that we've talked, talked about, right? And, and then we, we identified the parking areas separately, because, you know, on the auditorium site, we really don't have that indoor space, so it's outdoor. So I thought we'll break it out separately on this, because the reality is you could continue to park outside if you need to, right? It doesn't have to be necessarily enclosed. So for the city hall, based on this, um,. So for the City Hall, based on this, um, roughly, it wouldn't be thirty two, so you take that, so that at thirty five, thirty six thousand or twenty five, twenty six thousand square feet per City Hall itself. That works to be able to be, and we're assuming construction in 2025, right? We're about to go into 2024. We're assuming at the best case scenario, you're starting construction 2025. We looked at, looked at the values. I began our review to another number of construction companies I know right in the range. The project would be anywhere between a ten and a half to twelve hundred construction project for for the building. There's some site work, uh, depending about how much we do with the parking or redoing it all, or if we're just leaving it. It might not be a lot, and we know there'll be some utilities brought into it, and there'll have to be some work. So we're estimating anywhere between six fifty to seven, eight hundred, which could be on the high side. Especially if everything, all the utilities are right there, it might not be that much, but we allow some of some of the site work. It comes out to be about a twelve, a twelve point five million, about a sixteen point five million or sixteen, sorry, fourteen point six million for the City Hall. Again, when you're doing this level of masterminding, it's a range. Until we work out the particulars with all of you, it's just a general range. On top of that, with a new building, we allow 10% design and construction contingency. Again, you try to hold that, you hold you, during construction, you keep 5%, which is the city's money that you hope you don't spend. You're trying not to spend, it's just for the what-ifs and the things that might need to be addressed. But you do allow for some of the design contingency as well. Brings total construction about thirteen point eight to about sixteen point one million dollars. Total construction of the City Hall project. The soft costs for the A and E, for the testing, for the furniture, uh, for the geo-testing of the soils, for the site construction. A number of things were included in that soft cost that aren't construction-related items. They're they're outside of the actual construction. Could be appliances and things like that as well. Uh, we estimate around eighteen percent. But again, it could be less than that. What we do in the start of a project is we create a list, we go through all the things that are needed for the project, all the fees and all the things associated with it. And try to kind of hone in on exactly about what the costs are, but at a level like this, in a project this size, we utilize about eighteen percent as a general average. So that added about two point four, two point five to about two point nine. Making the total project for the City Hall, and this was regardless of, really, to some extent, there's a little bit of, depending where you put it, but given the size of this building, if you put it pretty much any decent site, it's going to be about this sixteen to nineteen million dollar total project cost, everything all included. So that's, that's roughly the cost of the City Hall. Could there be some efficiencies? Maybe. You look through the program, there could be some spaces that can be shaved, there could be some alternates built into it, there could be some opportunities to try to save some money. So that's kind of where that sits with the City Hall component.
That two-story or three?
We assume two-story, yes. But again,
Black then, or is it concrete block?
No, well, no, 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 most, most City Halls that we're doing are 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 metal stud, uh, with a veneer system, whether it's metal panel, whether it's brick, uh, most of them are are metal stud construction. That's a fairly, it it cost efficient and and speed of the construction-wise way to go. Black and bricks, nice. It's very expensive. You're you're paying a lot for that structure and you you, for energy efficiency, you don't need to create that kind of end wall. So we haven't done the kind of block, we've done them on police station, things like that because of the durability and security, but really not City Hall projects. Um, for the remodeling of the auditorium, what we looked at is the new roof, new mechan, new electrical, new mechanical, new plumbing are built in and baked into some of the other factors. Uh, the other thing we looked at was really, we did a gut and remodel of the basement, but that could be a portion, right? So there's, like I said, fourteen thousand, I think it's fourteen thousand five hundred, so in the basement. We assumed the gut and remodel of that. The reality is you might only do a portion. You might clean up stuff, clean up the damage, any mo- moisture mitigation, but you might just use that primarily for storage and not do as much in the basement. So there's some potential savings, but we assumed a gut and remodel of it. We assumed the other one, it's gut and model, is really on the first floor and potentially at the third floor as well. But again, I say the third floor, we'll clean it up, we'll keep it for storage. So there is some, there's some costs that could be produced on this because we looked at everything. We had all the costs in there for building the second floor, which I want to say was about three and a half million dollars to build the second floor in that building. Uh, I have to go back and check some of my numbers, but again, to pump the concrete in into into footings that were poured in the basement, to run the columns up to support the framing on the second level and open up a window to bring these trusses into the whole section. It's it's quite a, it's quite a feat to construct it. It can be done, but it takes a lot of work. So building the second floor, and again, you need that space, otherwise the only other option is to utilize the entire basement and the first floor and not really build anything above it. While that reduces the cost of it, you still have to have, most likely have to build light wells, signs to get natural light into it.
So then with that second floor, where the, all the seating is on the second floor, that all comes out, okay?
It's literally a floor up in it. What we're doing is assuming, we did some preliminary sketches, the the west side where the main entrance currently is would be remodeled for an elevator and for bathrooms and things like that. And really, your primary offices are where the auditorium starts and across all the way to the, to where the hardware hang spot is, to the, to the east side. And then the same thing for the second one. So that's your primary floor is what we, what we had figured. Um, again, elevators and stairs would have to be added into the building as we add the second level. We gotta do another exit stair on the other side of the building. We assume some exterior treatment. Again, if we're adding offices on that second floor, we gotta punch windows in there, build that in there as well. Uh, we also assumed another entrance piece on the south side, like we talked about. Demolition of the existing City Hall on the site prep for that. So all, all told, we were about just shy of fifteen million dollars for the, on the low end, and as high as eighteen point five on the high end. We had a slightly higher design contingency on this. I think it might have been about fifteen percent instead of 10% because it's a building that we just don't know where we're going to get it to. So when you start to remodel, you always allow a little bit more. Again, it's a large amount of money, but we're allowing two point two to two point seven in contingency on the thing is unknown as we get into it. Brings the total construction to about seventeen eight or seventeen one, about twenty one three. And then again, adding that same percentage for solid cost. The reality is, this one probably could be less because you're you're not going to add a lot more furniture than you would in the other City Halls. It is probably very more, it's probably more. So could there be a little bit of shave off in this? I think so. But at the end of the day, what we came up with is the difference between the City Hall and the auditorium on the low end is about four million dollars and about potentially as much as just shy of six million on the high end. So from what we saw in our analysis, repurposing the auditorium is going to be more expensive than building a clean new City Hall. That's what we determined in our analysis because of the amount of work that needs to be done.
You're not entirely sure what you're.
Not entirely sure.
If we were to go with Block 50, what kind of costs would we have remaining on the auditorium? We already said the roof would be about five hundred.
Yeah, the roof's about five hundred. That's, that's probably your most critical item to make sure you don't have any more issues. I'm not sure. I have to look into it. See, it's funny, the way the code kicks in is when you start to do much interior modeling, there has to be a percent spent towards accessibility and other things that have to be addressed. So it's just, if you're, you're not sure what you're going to do with the building. Think what is, we want to make sure the electrical system is safe. We want to make sure, you know, if the mercury and things like that are not disturbed, there might not be an issue, but I think there's some things electrically going to happen. We could give you a list of the minimum things we could suggest at this point, but I want to get into it a little bit more. I could provide you that list.
Kyle, I believe, most of the cities also we had got the numbers on it on rehab or tearing it down. I think tearing it down was two point one million. I think the rehab was like one point six. Don't go over that, but.
And we didn't have a number for rehab.
Not for rehab.
Oh, nobody came in with the.
That's true. And that was only for load mitigation. There was no rehab.
Yep, but it was what, two point one for tearing it down, correct?
One point two, I believe. One. But that, that bed is expired. It's not valid.
Okay, I was looking, there's price on there too for the rehab.
You did not receive any bits for rehab.
Just for load mitigation.
Yeah.
And there, there wasn't only a bid for relocating the, the rock, what do you call it?
The memorial.
The memorial room. No, no, we didn't go into that, any of that. One point two four three was demolition cost.
So what about the community center site? Are we blowing that off? Are we still looking at that or what's the deal?
That's totally up to the council.
I'd like to see updated numbers for it. Um, I think we had two versions too. Did it as a joint project or if we just did City Hall?
Well, if we built it out there, how much land would be to the east? Yeah.
That's, that's where the L shape of the business building is possible.
There's over five acres out there totally right now. That's the city owns, and are you talking about we're buying the house or is that?
Yeah.
We're kind of buying. Because right now the design is to where the community center is and then create an L shape, so that the community center moves to the back. So all the parking for the community centers in the back. And then parking, minimal parking in the front.
Was there, was there?
The reason I brought that up, Matt Lawson contacted me about this about a month ago and said, you know, we got a developer to build some senior housing out there on the other side to use the access for them to utilize the community center. I just don't know how true that there was out there, how many houses or you know, I don't know, that could fit out there, you know, some.
I don't think it's an area you want to have housing. Personally, I don't.
It's not, this is.
Yeah, I, I. I don't think it's an area you want to have housing.
Did we have a drawing just for the community, just for the City Hall?
Out there?
Yeah. We didn't.
No.
But you did want, it seemed like this was always kind of a community center site, either community center by itself or community center as City Hall.
So back to the auditorium, if we don't use that for City Hall, what is going to be the future of it? Because if we fix the roof, it's just going to sit there and maybe people will play basketball, but then we have this huge building we're having to pay for every year to keep it up.
If you, if you use it for a purpose, now we have to talk about remodeling for ADA compliant bathrooms, because we don't have ADA compliant bathrooms there. So that remodeling would have to be done on the main floor, which there are bathrooms there right now, but the door is about twenty four inches wide, eighty thirty, but not very big. So I mean, that would all have to be, you know, that would be done on the south side of the building. That's where the bathrooms are located, at on the south corner, southwest corner of the.
Has anyone approached you lately about buying it?
No, we've had conversations though. That's.
Julie, think that there might be a developer that might be interested in that?
Yes, she did.
Potentially, yeah.
Yeah, there has been developers that do buy historical buildings for housing purposes. So that is still something we can continue to dive into.
That would be something like what we started to lose with the old, I suppose.
Yep. But they have windows.
But also probably a possibility of us trying to find some grand money restored as an auditorium and come up with some uses for it.
Is that a possibility? Yep.
Because the old theater, the old stage could be brought back. There could be things that go on in that building from a functioning standpoint.
Well, if you do, if you bring back the stage, then you take up basketball. There's no other basketball then.
I've had a number of people come to me and ask how could we get a building or a facility for John Lindstram? To you.
But I still think it has more, more value, you know, if somebody wants to buy the building that we're not involved with it to do something historical with it, that's different than you know. I I think that's, that's a different kind of situation.
I hear you right, that you want to preserve the historical integrity and if there is a buyer that would do that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But I I still feel we have a responsibility to maintain that historical building. I think we've missed opportunities to do something.
I I believe you're, you're right. Uh, John Lindstrom, we've talked about him having a permanent place there, and then we talked a lot with some of the military, some of the veterans and some of the other programs. And there was a lot of interest to keep that building. There's a lot of interest to get John in there on a permanent basis. I mean, it's going to take work, don't get me wrong, but I think it can happen. Because it's a national historical building. There's a lot.
In that context, in that context of having, uh, John's is the city that thinking about that they would be taking over his having a museum there? I mean, is the city going to take that on? I'm just asking, future conversation, of course, but but who is going to, you know, maintain that, that after that? If it's still a city building and he's got his equip, his former memorial stuff in there? Continue is the same? I mean, those are just.
Well, I've had some people come to me and say, how could we get a building for that? And some people say, what about the city auditorium? Listen, if I know stuff he's got, he'd lose the gymnasium. I mean, that the way it is right now, he takes up that whole floor when he has this display. Well, that's why you're going to have to buy the building. That's what we're talking about here through these different entities. But even if, if, if if John or somebody put up a building for him, he's going to have to have fundraisers somehow to get money to be able to maintain a building. Now here we've got a building that has the war memorial and some historical value. If John somehow could develop contributors, I I don't know. I I don't know. I'm just talking.
Right. I I would, you know, I I would. I don't know how he would come up with three or four million and.
You might be surprised.
Oh, I, but I also know the Legion and the BF and the state, I mean, that's where you said there was a lot of interest.
It is. What I'm talking about, private entities too, that have said, hey, you know what? I've got a trust. I'd love to help this. But we haven't put it out there. We haven't done any feelers. But I'm just saying, you know, John, all the work was at twenty seventh or whatever, thirty seven years he's been doing that.
Yeah.
There's a lot of history. I mean, people would be great. We shut that down.
There are other facilities still that he could, he could
set up.
Set up.
Let's get an hour and a half in the meeting with the budget still to talk about what else to eat downtown.
So we can get numbers.
Be that guy.
We're going to get numbers for.
And we'll get updated numbers for the community centers, City Hall, on at the community center site.
Yep, and I'll give you a list of the items that we see that would be required to address in the auditorium as well.
So. Bruce, did you have next steps on here too?
I think we're going to hold the next steps because next steps really had to do with a lot of developers.
Yeah, I mean. Yeah, I didn't think that. I thought that was the next step on that one, but okay.
Yeah, what we'll do is all
So council. Next steps then, council, then review, I'm just talking. So next steps then would be to review numbers again for Block 50, just City Hall, auditorium, City Hall and Community Center. When I call Robinson. So that's the next steps in for. Okay. Do you want, then, this would be, I would say, since we've got powers coming up, that this would then be in December? Like December tenth, December? December eleventh? Council will be the fourth, have a work session on the eleventh and then council on the eighteenth. Does that make sense? Be done here for anything going forward in the room, except the council meeting next week.
Also, since it's on the screen, I'm reminded that we probably need to have a conversation about the future of Block 50. If that's up for development. Also, since it's on the screen, I'm reminded that we probably need to have a conversation about the future of block fifty, if that's up for development or no.
Well, this is in the Renaissance.
I understand that.
So if you want. What? Well, you might as well. I think the council should take it off the table completely.
Put it on.
Because Aaron Batman constantly is looking for somebody to develop within our Renaissance zone. The council doesn't want to have block fifty on the table anymore. Because then also that also then shifts to our paving projects that we're going to have to put block fifty on our paving because that's, that's a necessity right there. That's what you're going to raise it to. So.
I'm asking for it to be put on that agenda in the next couple of months.
You got it.
And I'd like, if we're going to have that on the agenda, then I'd like to have, all right, to have Aaron come in and talk about the importance of, of it.
Yeah.
And other areas maybe too. Well, downtown in general.
All right. Every, every, you know, that's in the Renaissance zone, he's constantly pushing it. For sure.
And, and that's where I'm coming from. As far as, I don't want to waste anybody's time. And to have, because they already put a lot of time and energy into that concept and I think we need to be clear. And I, and I think we, I think we understand maybe not that as far as how important it is to have housing and how that has a ripple effect for what happens with our downtown.
I think it's pretty obvious too, that we do not want that parking lot to stir. That's what I heard tonight, that parking lot is very important to a lot of different businesses.
Let's be able to make an informed decision on that after hearing from Aaron and after thinking about the, the impact it's going to have on paving costs in the future.
Yep. But we're going to have you give us more information on the current community.
City Hall Community Center?
Community Center location. We've got the your cost of approximately twenty million.
It was pretty much.
Block fifty before.
Yeah.
Yeah. I mean, and you, you run into a little bit of the same thing we discussed before that came up previously is, is if you, if you build a community center site, what was being proposed was demolishing the community center to build something new and complete that worked on that site. That was, that was some of the angst that some of the community center or some of the seniors had about that facility. What are we going to do for a year while that's under construction? So it's still going to be on the table. Now we can look at ways to build the building in the back, but it's kind of, you know, are you really building a city hall back behind the community center? Is that really where you want to be? Probably not.
No, I think the community center would have to be built first and then the city hall would have to be built.
Oh, build the community center first.
Build the community center.
The battery.
Yeah.
No, that would make sense.
Yeah.
We take five minutes, right?
Anything else, Bruce?
No, Leslie, I'll put together a list and I'll give you just to make sure we're absolutely on track with some of the next one like that. Excellent. And like I said, everybody, you all get this back as well. So you all have time to. Chris, I'll give them the copy you shared with us tonight. Thank you, Chris.
Thanks, Chris.
Good. Thank you. They've been here for what, two and a half?
All right. So in your packet, this is the same information that we had handed out at the last session that we had at the MUC. But we did add, that would be attachments three, four and five. But is new for this, or I should say up for review again, is we wanted to make sure we went over the CIP another time with the council. This is the last time, last time council looked at it was in this room before we set the preliminary budget in September. So this is that same list has changed ever so slightly. We were at roughly one point five, three or just over one point five million and did have one adjustment that we knew we could make on that list for downtown street lighting. That's we have an actual cost for that at a hundred and eighty-six thousand instead of two hundred and fifty. So that's why there is a slight adjustment getting us to one point four. So again, this is the same, same, essentially this is the same list that the council saw in September. And if we want to go through it or just to take a look at it one more time of what is being proposed funded here in 2024.
Yeah. So the cash is what makes the difference in the levy.
Yeah. So, right. So, and we'll take one more step back. We'll look at this down, look at this from the ten thousand view again. So if you remember our discussions with capital improvement, we are proposing to only fund three hundred and fifty thousand dollars of general levy of cash to go towards our capital improvement, our CIP, this document. And the remainder, the difference come out of the community investment fund. And that is what we modeled for you at previous work sessions to make kind of stop, really to bring the CIP back into the general levy to be able to pay for that with cash moving forward. There were steps shown there during presentations with the finance director, myself and Leslie were here. Going with that model could look like in the future. And the reason we did that again is to, we're reintroducing the CIP back into the general levy as cash instead of taking that from our reserves as we did. So in the previous years, there was a million and a million and a half that was taken out of our reserves to, to fund our, to fund our general levy. And really that's the place of the CIP. If you want to look at it that way. So as we slowly introduce this back into the tax base, we're proposing using CIF, Community Investment Fund, to fund the CIP. Throwing out acronyms, I apologize. As we go through it, if there's any, we'll go line by line again real quick. And if there's questions or red flags, please interrupt me. So civic center roof replacement, again, this is a maintenance issue over the shop portion of this building. Snow guards for the civic center roof. That is a, again, another maintenance issue. So they physically have to go out there and snow blow, bring snow blowers up on top of the roof and get snow off. So this would yeah, just be a, a maintenance and safety issue for the, for the roof here. The storage, moving on to the aquatic center. Storage shed, we, that was a, as we discussed, that building is currently owned by the school district and would like to have our own storage facility out there. We do use the complex, or excuse me, for the pool and for storage of like the umbrellas, for instance, for those storage items. So that was the request for the storage shed. Replacement of umbrella covers, it's a part of a three, three or four year maintenance schedule, three years, I believe. Two, this is two umbrellas for fifteen thousand dollars. So we're spacing that out over three years. We're going to skip number fifteen because that's going to be bonding dollars. Number sixteen, under engineering, six is the pedestrian bridge. Now, we are not sure what that cost is going to be at this time, but we want to make sure there's dollars set aside. If we have an opportunity with BNSF to do something to improve the condition of that pedestrian bridge.
Yeah, a couple of conversations about that too. This is in, working in conjunction with Burlington Northern to all them responsible to for.
So sidebar from, from this, we do have a BNSF put forward to the city and to the county, a joint corridor study to do everything that the city and county of BNSF touches jointly essentially. And that includes the pedestrian bridge.
Thank you.
So that is currently under review. Downtown streetlights, I mentioned that, that was originally was two hundred and fifty thousand. We do have an actual cost of a hundred and eighty-five, so that was adjusted.
Do we have any money left over from the grant that can go towards that?
I do not believe so.
What? The downtown? We've spent it all?
My understanding is that this streetlights don't qualify.
Cause originally.
From the beginning, but, because that's, yeah. I'll review that again with Jill. Okay. That's what I understand.
The hazardous materials containment system, this is a much needed maintenance safety item. The original, I believe, was homemade. Is leave over twenty years old, just needs to be, needs to be replaced. Rescue struts, a safety issue for the fire department. This would.
I'm asking a question about the hazardous.
Yes, absolutely. Would that, would that qualify under ARPA?
Yes.
Either ARPA or public safety.
Not public safety. We have built anything for public safety.
Right.
Public safety money we're getting in December.
Correct. Not from building.
So we can't.
For, yeah.
That's a building.
Yep, ARPA.
American Recovery Program dollars that we have. So I mean, we earmarks some stuff.
Yep.
Into for twenty twenty-four, but we haven't, we haven't approved any of that. I mean, we could move that into ARPA.
Right.
Press twenty-five K off the cash there.
That qualifies for ARPA? I thought Leslie said it.
ARPA, it will, it won't qualify for the public safety dollars we're getting in December. Because the public safety dollars we're getting in December, we cannot build anything with it.
You having to take away then from something else that we thought the ARPA money was going for?
We'll redo that. We'll redo ARPA.
Yeah, we've got that in today's conversation.
Yep. I've got a number, line number twenty-one marked.
And approve that, some of the things on there.
Oh, question. This is about the storage shed. So does school own that? How much are they saving right now by not paying for the SRO? Know what I'm saying? Maybe they put it in a storage shed.
Well, that SRO contract is also being formulated right now at the attorney's side, which we have not seen the draft yet. But it appears that they can pay us for SROs.
Oh, okay.
So.
We're taking that.
I was about a hundred and sixteen dollars.
This wasn't a request because we share their storage unit.
Yes. And actually some of the, if I'm not mistaken, the storage unit out there has some of our pool equipment inside it. Yes, that we would have to move.
Like they don't want us to use the storage shed anymore? Or we don't want you to use it?
We want to.
We would like to use our own storage shed because this also has the utilities, water and light, uh, waters or lights in there too.
For another year?
Wait, I'm sure.
It's got things like the freezer units or the concession stand. So I think those are still under, anyway, they were when I was working.
So they're not asking us to build their own?
This is more of a want than a need.
Well, I think there is somewhat of a need too, and that it comes from also just equipment that we want to store, that we can't store in there.
We talked about.
So there's.
What it's on the center, having to, we store all the chemicals at public, at the public garage currently.
Yeah.
This would allow us to store them on site.
And would put it in a different location than.
Cause.
Over by the.
Than the heater? Then it would be, you know, it would, yeah.
No, but that storage unit is close to the soccer.
Right, correct.
Field where we probably wouldn't put it over there.
That soccer field is no longer used either. Soccer field is no longer used either.
No, but I mean, we would build it on closer to the.
Yes, we would build it closer to the aqueduct, of course.
Keep going. All right. Number twenty-four rescue struts, those help with car accidents, stabilizing vehicles, removing, removing anyone that's trapped in a vehicle, just helps stabilize a vehicle. Outside lighting at the fire station, that was reduced ten thousand. There's some additional lighting that they would like at the front of the building at the main entrance. Indoor lighting changing to LEDs. This was something that the council had added back in. Again, this would be a maintenance and cost saving. Future cost savings going from moving to LED.
On that note, on the LEDs too, I, about three months ago, two months ago, Justin? Apex Engineering came in and did an assessment of all of our buildings for LED lighting and things like that. And next week, when Craig Ackerson is the engineer on that, that worked on that project. And he will be back in the state next week. So we're going to have another discussion on that along with, because there is funding out there for LED changing of and such. So we'll look and see if we can get some dollars from the state and that for changing out to LED and updating lighting. So.
The body armor and the body armor, I think was the other. Just the question, five thousand dollars? Does that qualify for any kind of, or why did we take it off?
It potentially qualified in the public safety bill.
Okay, thank you.
The body armor is for the fire department, not for the police department.
No, I'm sorry. I was up there.
Moving into parks and rec, we'll go to line twenty-eight, playground equipment. This is our normal allocation for, for playground equipment. It helps us stay up to date with playgrounds throughout, throughout our community.
I'd like to suggest we take a break from that this year with some of the other stuff that we've done. And maybe we can get ourselves, we'll go, maybe take a million dollars?
That was going to be my, I was going to ask it as a question, what happens if we take a break?
Yeah.
And we have to promise.
But we're in next year, pulled a hundred thousand dollars for the paddle that we pulled a hundred thousand dollars last year for parks and rec. To build the Blue Cross.
But I think there should be, I think that we could take a break and prioritize. I think the park plan could be prioritized with where we need to go next and have more of a plan for not ten colors of equipment and have more of a plan. Get ready to go back at it.
Leslie or Kyle, either of you have a a quick response to like, what happens if we stop for a year?
You'll be behind. I mean, you will. I mean, there's. Yeah, you know, we have, it was on the docket to replace parks and park equipment every year and so, but.
Did we replace park this year or this year?
We, like Tom said, we did the the cross bush shield.
Oh, a hundred thousand dollars for parks last year.
But added to the park.
But it added to the parks, yeah.
I know how you feel about it, but that aside.
Something nobody uses.
Well, I disagree with you fundamentally, but yeah.
I do see people using this.
Well, I'm glad you do because every time I drive by there, everybody will tell of me, they don't ever see anybody out there. One person told me they've seen the bikes.
What if we just reduce it some, so we can get down to a million dollars?
We couldn't.
Oh, and then I think we need to, I'll wait till we get to the end, but I think the two things in city hall I want to hear about, adding those back in.
Have on the park equipment? Okay, we just bought by the end of this year because we do that two for one usually of purchase.
Yes, we did do that.
Okay, so that's.
So we've already spent it is what you're saying? If they've already ordered, then that's what.
No, we haven't ordered anything.
Oh, Julie just said they ordered it.
No, I said we haven't done that this year.
Okay.
But typically, typically what it was, was that it was done in the fall.
Sure.
And then brought in the next year.
Right.
Right, and we did, we have not done that this year. Because as we said, we used some of that funding for the cross blue shield. For the athletics.
We could have hard core to regroup, so we could do it. Could do this next block and do it.
I do have, I mean, Rob and I have been working on updating the park plan too. And so we'll continue, you know, when that gets, we can put that on the docket for twenty twenty four to upgrade and look at the park plan, see where we are, see, you know? And then if there is still this funding here, then we can do something yet in twenty, at the end of twenty twenty four. We do have ARPA money yet too, so if you still, you know, playground equipment, at least that's a long term deal, it's not a short term buy.
You can't, we can't use ARPA money for that.
Yeah, you could.
Well, we could, because there's a bunch of money in there for the rec, for the lost revenue.
I mean, you can use ARPA money, because playground equipment is something that's outside, and so that was something that, you know, you could upgrade.
Then let's just take it out.
Yeah, I mean, we still have. So, we'll make note of it.
Okay, keep moving through here, uh, bike and walking trail grants, this was a grant match that we want, would like to keep.
No, not that one. That one is in case we get other grants. The fifty thousand. Seventy five thousand is the other grant.
Yep.
That we have to fund.
So we'd like to keep those two in it for any future potential projects. That we might be able to come across, number line thirty, the pickle court resurfacing, um, it's time, it's, that it's heavily used area, it's time to get resurfaced.
When was that built and surfaced?
Two thousand eighteen, I believe, was the number.
Yes. Five years.
Five years.
So five seven should be a recommendation. On that, uh, we look, is there a lot of products or anything? I didn't know.
Yes. That's.
Call on us, some specialties on a firewall, they'll come and do a site evaluation. They'll give you a pretty good estimate on what the cost. Have some specialties on a firewall.
So we'll start charging for people to play pickleball, because it's pretty expensive. You can't do that every five years.
It's same as Tenscore, often, you guys used to do Tenscores, not very often. But the sooner you can do it on, the better off you are, I work for.
Back Tenscore.
Ten years of middle school.
Yeah.
But typical, we're often like, I'm much worse than.
Oh, yeah. How they do it? Where I.
Max specialties will be able to get pretty good numbers on that. Uh, number thirty eight, cold storage lighting, again, this was something that we council added at the last, uh, last time we looked at it, this was LED conversion. Uh, to the cold storage box at the public works area, or your storage facility behind the main building. And then door replacement, we, this was also added, and this was really a trade, if you remember, we, the council had, you had requested that we remove the concrete addition at the DOAC and replace this with overhead doors, a walk through doors at the public works garage. Almost a wash on that one. Um, then forty four, forty five, and forty six, we just would like for holiday decorations, downtown banners. Um, and we are still trying to refine these, get these numbers a little bit lower, but well, this is a good ballpark where it would be, but it could come a little bit lower depending on maybe some final equipment costs.
So is that an option for Donald Connors at First Street?
This one is downtown and extending on First Street, I don't recall how far, but I can find, I.
Iron Age Christmas.
Um, just the large banners.
They're banners. And the other ones are wreaths.
Just the recap. To be a member of Main Street, what do we need to do? Forty, forty five.
I don't recall the top of my head.
What do we pay our Main Street director?
I can provide that.
We can get that.
None of the Main Street organizations, downtown businesses, they don't pay dues.
No.
Sorry, did you answer, is, is it just for downtown?
I, I believe it extends up and down First Street as well, but I don't recall the, how far each direction, so I will, we'll get that information for you.
These people are on Highway seventy one to the battery.
Yeah, for sure. Yeah, I believe so.
Rob.
I believe so, but I would like to.
I think the downtown decorations are because the lots we had were about thirty years old or something.
And with the new full screen post, we can't use the old. We couldn't use the old stuff, because there are different um, posts and different hardware.
They posted something that I thought they were putting little ones up right now.
There's banners.
Just for, they, just for downtown, there's some smaller ones that they got through um, through the Main Street grant funding. They're only available for downtown. Then moving into equipment, um, this gets a little more tricky here, uh, because there are a lot of needs. Or again, we're just trying to update our fleet here, but uh, main pieces of equipment, there's field equipment for really new, for parks and rec, and it's to maintain arming fields here. And then a roller for the public works department. Uh, that piece of equipment is, I don't know, a couple decades old at this point, it is due for replacement. And then there is one truck that's up for replacement at the public works, for public works, and then the police has four vehicles scheduled for cycle from replacement as well in twenty twenty four.
Can the vehicles come out of that money that we're getting in December?
Well, see, the problem with that is that the vehicles only last four years. So is that really a good expenditure of our public safety money? What if we try to use our public safety money for something that lines the law?
For example?
Fire truck. Radios.
Oh, it's the second thing?
Radio, as an example. If you look at this whole column here, uh, this is a, what we're suggesting as a equipment bond. So wouldn't be, it would not be cash, it would not come out of the CIF. Um, we do have a need for some very large pieces of equipment, roughly two point three million, almost two point four million dollars for ladder truck, a new dump truck, and a road grader. Um, these are pieces of equipment that we hang on for ten, fifteen, twenty, twenty five years, depending on what it may be. So when we talk about equipment certificates, this might be a, a good use to, or a good time to use a equipment certificate, since it's a shorter payback. Um, shorter payback period, maybe seven, eight years, and we can extend, we still use the, the equipment will last well beyond that.
Can you explain the public safety funding money that we're getting? Well, um, just read it two weeks ago.
So we're estimated to receive just, just under a million dollars, nine hundred ninety. My knowledge, we have not received a final allocated dollar amount. Uh, that was supposed to be released by the state at the end of September, we still haven't seen it yet.
That's one time money?
One time money, uh, it can be used, cannot be used for salaries, it cannot be used for construction, it cannot be used for a number of things. But we know it can be used for equipment, mental health, uh, supply. Or so that's why we better reoccurring less, we've been, not been successful applying for FEMA grants for radios, for example. So that's why we have been, that's why we're, it's a large asset, it's about three hundred thousand dollars, what we would need for radios uh, for both our fire department and our police department. Those lines, that's maybe a down payment towards a ladder truck, just because it's one time spending. We can get twenty years plus out of a ladder truck, might be a good opportunity to use that, but we could spend that money three times over uh, easily, just beyond the needs that we have for public safety.
So where is public safety? Is nine hundred twenty two thousand, two hundred ninety two dollars.
Nine twenty two?
Nine twenty two.
Okay, we could put all that to ladder trucks.
Certainly can.
Could.
You could.
Council could.
And that's our blue line, on here, for public safety, no?
Yes, the second to last column.
Yeah, okay.
So we put in a hundred thousand dollars for radio replacement for, for um, part of our fifteen thousand for forensic computer upgrade, uh, this does not include radios for the PD at this time, and we're not out there working on a cost estimate, both departments are.
Was the, was the goal of that public safety money to enhance things like mental health and some of those kinds of things?
Eligible expenses, yes.
There's eight hundred K left to spend.
Um, according to this, yes, but our running list we've got at City Hall. We haven't, this is the first time that I've seen that final, that we've seen that final document, so we didn't want to put too much into it until we knew exactly. So we've moved about seventy thousand, we were estimated to be nine, nine ninety, and now we're at nine twenty. Now, you know, our final number, I think we can have a war.
They better prepare for it, that list of things that staff has been talking about, that's, that's not anything that's in front of us right now.
Radios would be in the ladder truck.
Right, yeah.
And the.
What's on your list for the rest of it?
That would take up all of it.
One million seven hundred.
I see what you.
That's what I mean by we could spend this three times over and still have, yes.
Right, so you're, you're talking about not doing equipment certificates for some of them?
Or potentially not, potentially not for the full two point three mil.
The squad cars we could.
Wouldn't, that would not be our recommendation.
They don't last long enough. We need something. But are we?
Yeah.
The radios and the tire truck and.
Okay.
Mostly.
I get that question. One million seven hundred thousand dollar ladder truck, do we really need it?
Yeah, I can't answer that, that's the theory, that's from the fire chief.
It's been a couple of years. I mean, this is making for quite a while.
I know. I I can't say.
Are we selling one, or is this an addition?
Is it a replacement?
Replacement.
Well, I think it's just under twenty five years old, the current, the one that would be.
We're trying to, are you selling it though?
I believe it had a trade in, yeah, but.
Yes.
But there's not a one point two million dollar ladder truck, right?
Um, well, they've got a team, they've, yeah, they've got a, a list of trucks, twenty, thirty, twenty, twenty eight, twenty thirty two. I mean, we're looking at another maybe one, five between two other trucks.
Sure, I'm just saying, like, is there one that's cheaper?
Oh, um.
Um, I don't know about that length of one, so I don't.
It's not like one with an eight rack rather than the C B player.
How about it, you don't, you didn't see it's leaning because of the height of some of our buildings, right?
I'm sure.
Yes, with our fire.
Replacing, yeah.
And it also has a direct effect to commercial, um, your insurance rates, depending on what we can provide as a player. There is a value to the community to have, to have it.
Question about the, the squad car is to, just again, so what if question, what if we did three and not four? I mean, that, that runs the police department back a little bit.
A little, little backstory maybe on where we're at, we, it's extremely difficult to get vehicles, uh, the police department was successful earlier in the year, securing one new interceptor. Uh, just this last month, maybe a week or two ago, uh, one of the officers was able to locate three new vehicles, uh, just outside of, it's about eighty miles from Minnesota border, but it's in Illinois. Um, and there, so we did spend our twenty twenty three allocation for four vehicles, uh, but it's just getting increasingly more difficult.
Accommodations for K nine unit.
About nine thousand more.
Nine thousand more.
Um.
Air conditioning.
Yeah, air and seats and
Yeah.
automatic doors and there's.
Different cages, they have different cages. Yeah, there's, and that needs to be back in the back for the dog. You know, that kind of thing, can't just be air conditioning in front of the dog's system also, so those kind of things.
So that, that's what I have to, I mean, that's our list.
I know.
Questions are.
Go back to the top. I'd like to see us put the bathroom remodels in the City Hall back in, in trend. Matter what we do with City Halls, we're going to.
I don't know how we can do that.
Why?
Remodel bathrooms in the City Hall.
Why?
Because we don't have the space to do it. I mean, the one, and one.
I'm talking about a regular toilet, higher toilet and some, I mean, there could be some upgrades in the space that's there right now, wouldn't it? Isn't that what you're talking about?
No, I think.
Should be like, be accessible.
Yeah.
Haven't we at least seen that one?
Well, we, just to replace it, no, we can't, but it's not going to cost ten thousand.
But if we had, if we had an employee that became, we would have to do it. We had someone that had some.
I don't know if we can bring a little that wall. That's a question that we'd have to.
So how did it get in here to begin with?
Um, the public works put it in. Is it a question on the.
Which one are you talking about? First one, or the one way back at the corner?
Some would have to be upgraded.
Why?
Well, only if you want, I mean.
You don't have to do that.
You can have unisex one, yes.
Here, they're on the second floor.
Two.
There's two.
Yep.
They anti cat accessible?
I'd say they are.
Yeah, an elevator.
Yeah.
So we're okay.
Question all. But yes, we do have an elevator, yes. So far.
What is it, what is the other one? We can't do that one, what's the circulation pump for the boiler system? We just put a new, new.
That's been, that's been fixed already.
Oh, yeah.
We're done with it.
Thank you, I'm done.
That was a necessity.
Needed heat.
It had to be done. And what in, and what did we end up doing for the furnace, I was just commenting earlier, I said, the furnace is going to make it through another year. Did we, I know one time we talked about having to bring in portable heaters and. No, I think in a furnace, that had to do with that pump here, that pump replacement and all that, so.
Should take care of everything.
Yeah, okay.
We put a new, new thing in a few years ago. Right, we had to put in a new furnace.
I couldn't answer that.
Yeah, yeah, we can.
Yeah, okay.
And there's steam.
Yeah, we had to.
Is that when the, when all the steam?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Top water?
Yeah.
Okay. So that's only three years old, that. Probably five, no? Time flies, okay.
So I guess, is there a, is there a number that you'd like us staying for now? So I guess, is there a, is there a number that you'd like us staying for in order? A million?
If we take the purpose equipment. Oh, below a million. If you're saying you've already got three fifty.
In cash, yeah.
In cash, then you'd be above a million to come out of that fund, right?
Yeah.
I think that has just materials containment system moved to our, uh.
Yeah, I've got, I've been taking notes, so everything that was brought up, we'll review and see if we've got other options and. To fund them.
Any questions on ladder truck, was it buying brand new now or are we just going to be covering part of the money away?
Brand new now. Takes three years to get a ladder truck.
Bill, that's a lead time on it.
So we have.
So we made, we made three payments. One payment when we ordered it. One payment about what?
Halfway through.
Halfway through, about eight, twelve months or so. And then the final payment when it's delivered.
So, but. If we kicked it off, put away a third of that this year. Fill up the rest of it. Next two years.
You're talking about our funds, our public safety funds for that?
But if we only have a one, one time, one year payment of the nine twenty-two. That would like all go toward the ladder truck.
That's the down payment.
Well, they're talking about a hundred thousand dollars going to whole equipment.
Well.
Yeah, if you have. If we move the full nine hundred thousand from state for, for truck, I'd be all in it. Because we're not borrowing them, you know.
Don't you want that much more? What?
Then we only have two thousand dollars, two thousand dollars.
Our funds. But you're talking about an equipment certificate? For apartment?
Just as another option, again, that was, that was.
You could use hard funds for the fire truck. Okay, then let's save our taxpayers some money and throw some microphones on.
If I have memory service correct, I believe it would have been two payments in twenty twenty-four. And then the last payment in twenty, sometime in twenty twenty-five towards that ladder. The first payment was the most expensive of it. Six or seven hundred thousand.
Yeah, actually, we can say the first payment now.
Whenever we.
Right, yeah. And, and then it would be one more payment in twenty twenty-four and another thing in twenty twenty-five.
Well, let's get numbers on what we could pitch in from state and then from our.
So all you want to know is that we're okay with doing it, right, right now?
Yeah, more or less, I, I guess for tonight, we're really, I mean, we're, we can, we can talk about the whole document, but this is really. Where we're going to see a lot of movement, I think this is where I would like the council to. Kind of make, that's where we want to focus, I mean, for a lot of our focus, but, um, in the back of our mind, yes, we're always looking at the new public safety bill. And then we're, we're going to move into ARPA right after this.
I think the ARPA conversation is, is related. Right, you know, to this, because there's, there's still a bunch of stuff on this that could be used for ARPA or if that even. Under a million.
Uh, and we did move, sorry.
No, I just think it's a matter of priorities for us, so I don't, I, I find it hard to wrap up this conversation without having the ARPA conversation.
Okay.
Do you want to move into ARPA, we can come back to this, or we will, or?
Yeah, I think they're, they ducked him.
And so, um, just as clouds are changing, so the fire truck right now on this was back in June, was one point seven three. One million seven hundred and thirty-two thousand eight hundred and twenty-five dollars without a discount. So if we sign a twelve month signing contract, the first payment is four hundred and ninety thousand dollars. The second payment. Um, which is about four months after chassis delivery is another four hundred and forty thousand dollars. Four hundred and forty five, four hundred and forty thousand five hundred. The final payment, um, two to three months after aerial delivery. Is another seven hundred and seventy-four thousand, seven hundred and seventy-five thousand. So it's about an eighteen to twenty-four month delivery rate. Basically five hundred and five hundred.
And we don't know about like the different package deals that these come with.
Like.
Well, if you pay for it all.
Justin was asking.
If you pay for it all.
When justice were asking about, um. Uh, specifications. That are on it.
Yeah, I don't have the specifications on it, but they have, they fired, the firemen have written the specifications. They didn't provide that to me at this time.
Okay.
If you pay for it all, you get a probably twenty-seven thousand dollar discount.
I can appreciate that, but we feel like there is anything that we could tweak. Uh, the specifications that are, that are wanted and needed. I don't have the expertise, I beg to purchase.
That's probably no different than the others. Get the bells and whistles.
You have to have the fireman here to tell us what exactly.
And.
We can't.
Right, oh, I know.
Actually, I think we reviewed this other, but we didn't do it, we did have that.
But my understanding was we got some bells and whistles that we didn't necessarily need, that's my concern.
We did.
Well, well, okay, somebody at the fighter service. That's why I'm asking the question.
Is he not at this table?
Not at our table.
Remember those conversations.
Okay.
We can have.
We'll get him. I'm just.
Moving into ARPA, um. Twenty, the first, uh, section that we see for twenty twenty-three, these are what we have spent in ARPA already. So these were all brought before council at different times throughout the year. These are our incumbent costs. So moving to twenty twenty-four. This is a carryover list from. Conversations, I believe in twenty twenty-two. Uh, the only thing that was added to this list was the public works air exchange system, the hundred thousand dollars that was removed by. From the last quarter session we had when we reviewed this, when the council reviewed this last time, so we did add that. In twenty twenty-four. Um, as you can see, again, we did not tweak anything of any of the numbers, these are carryovers from twenty twenty-two, from that original list. Um. Way it sits right now, we are a hundred thousand dollars over where we, what our allocation is, we would have to adjust, but, um.
There's, there's some things on here though that are in my mind. At H R A we talked about. And we can't find anything in writing, but people are looking back to that, that figure originally was a hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the housing. Cap, uh, the fund set up and that fund is ready to go and the county has made a, if the funds in, but they haven't made commitments, I think on their last meeting.
But to look back on the council package.
I don't.
It was a council workshop at the beginning of January that we discussed.
Yes. We can have a conversation again, but the figure that was put out there, I think was a hundred and fifty thousand by the mayor.
Yeah, I would, I would say anything that you see under twenty-four, um. Say aside from Tyler Tech and aside from the air exchange system, I mean, those numbers, those bottom two are actual costs.
And I thought that the safe, the safe house had been removed by a previous discussion. On here too.
Know if it had been formally removed. I don't know if it had formally been removed. Guess if it was during a work session and.
Conversation.
You know, yeah.
About the Raymond ambulance too, that was. That.
Nothing on twenty twenty-three?
No, not for an ambulance.
Knowing that, it's. I think they resolved that.
I don't know.
No, we only had the discussion, but I don't think it was ever. Because that came to the council meeting because of the workshop with the letter. I'm not mistaken, but that's the only thing that happened, was that there was no formal.
One thing with ARPA two, just as a reminder, the clock is now ticking for the city, uh, for anyone that received ARPA funding, we do have to allocate our entire. The remaining balance, what we have left by the end of the year. But you don't have to spend it, we have to allocate it.
Yeah.
We have until twenty twenty-six to spend.
We have to have the projects in place.
What is multi-generational programming, age friendly?
That was, uh, something that the, uh, community center came up with, I believe, as far as doing some programming for. For. Between. Ages. Young adults to seniors. I don't know where that estimate came from.
Have we spent this?
I mean, you know, we do have the age friendly grant that we're working on now. So that still could be a possibility that we could, but I don't know if it needs to be. That. I mean, we'd have to, we have to look further into what are we going to do next year or twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five? When we have our grant complete and after we get, because now, right now, our grant is, we're doing an assessment. Of our community, which we're talking about, age friendly grant that we had received. And Pablo's been working very closely on that, and so what the next step is after we do the assessment, I'm not sure on that. There could be some programming that comes out of that and, um. Which, you know, we could plan on, but I think we can work within the perimeters of, uh. You know, that the council sets down for that, because it is something we want to continue, because that also plays into the part of our housing. Issues and stock and things like that. And, um, what kind of other program is, do we have to provide going forward? What are some things that we can start doing out at the community center? That kind of thing too.
And I love, I love the idea of it, I'm supportive of it. But if a quarter, a million dollars, I've got questions about how much and what's mental health professional, I feel like I should know this.
That was the part, that was part of the Susan Hared, um. Directed that we did with the, with her. And then, and then also then the police department is supposed to do like check from the neck up type sort of stuff too.
And those, that's, sorry, those are solid estimate numbers, it is those services estimates, yeah, they, not, okay.
I don't think, no, they were just estimates.
What do you want us to want from us tonight? I don't, I'm. There's a three hundred and twenty-six thousand for parking circuits lost revenue, but we just subtract it from their budget this year.
No, that's the one, see, that's the one time thing there, so that's, you don't want to get into that, because you've subtracted from their budget this year. You got to make up that three hundred and twenty-six thousand dollars next year in their budget. So you end up negatively affecting your tax rate by taking that out of your budget, what do you want?
What does it do?
What does it do then?
Well, I think, well, it, it, right now, you can use it for whatever you want, we're just saying that that.
Playground equipment.
You know, yeah.
It would add, it would, it would replace anything, it would just be an addition.
Yes, you don't want it, so I'm just saying that the budget itself that the, that we have proposed. For the general tax levy. You don't want to use this money for one time, things like that, because you've got to replace it. So if you use it for playground equipment, that's on the capital improvement side. That's not affecting your general tax levy, capital improvement only affects your tax levy when you start, you want to start. We want to start building that capital improvement into our general. Because we need to, if you're going to always pay. Cash for things, it has to start getting built into your regular budget.
So the capital improvement stuff from before. Everything for the parks and rec department, everything they're asking for is three hundred and twenty-eight K. Which is a thousand dollars difference from that number. Like. That seems real obvious to me.
We can do that.
And we can take all of those out of the capital improvement.
Right. And then you're down under a million dollars under your. Capital improvement.
I would look, I, I, I really just like working with H R A and that, that fund, that's got the, uh. I, I just really want to, I would like to see us go back to the amount that was discussed before if possible, or at least to a hundred.
We'll do whatever the council would like us to do.
But I.
Well, how much of that money is going from, see all of that?
Well, it's going into that fund, yeah.
One of them might get it.
Not necessarily, we, no.
I think we're probably would see. A greater benefit to it, because we're more progressive in the things that we're doing and faster in what we can do with things.
And that money, and that fund that's being set up allows us to apply for grants and certain things. That you have to have a, you have to have that funds there in order to apply for, to get extra funds. That's why it's being set up, the community trust fund. With that. This is an opportunity for us to do that without having to take money out of our budget.
There isn't any final decisions, although it is important to go over ARPA because there's opportunities to maybe. Um, supplement the C I P with smart, ARPA funds, which will show that and get that updated out to everybody. Uh, but again, we don't need to make any final decisions on ARPA till the end of the year.
I was going to say, so when and how are we going to make that decision, that's soon.
End of twenty twenty-four, I'm sorry.
That's not, yeah.
No, we have, we have the year.
Sorry, not, not this year, end of twenty-four.
But to finalize this. We kind of, we need to make that decision in the next. One.
So if I've got, if I'm hearing everyone.
C I P you don't necessarily make. Because it doesn't affect the general tax levy. So what you do, you know, C I P.
If we agree to that, Leslie, we haven't agreed to.
No, we don't.
If we.
But I'm just saying that this, this will not affect your general tax levy though, is what I'm saying. Okay. Okay, the reduction of these numbers don't affect general tax levy. Because in the general tax levy, we do have three hundred and some thousand dollars of cash in the general tax levy. Now, you want to, and the reason why. Going forward, we have a balanced budget on our general tax levy right now, which is very important. And so now we just have to work in how are we going to do capital improvements? You don't want to do anything, not going to. Everything can stay status quo, we just spend, don't spend anything next year on capital improvements.
We know we can't do that.
I think the point is, if we, let's say that council does move that direction, that doesn't change our levy, changes it by three hundred and fifty thousand.
So we get that three hundred and fifty thousand stays in the bank, it does the following year when you want to do something else.
That's just the situation.
Yeah, we're in.
Currently.
Yeah.
I was gonna.
Don't want to reduce our reserves any further than what we are.
Are we talking about the general tax levy tonight?
We're not talking about going over the.
We've got it on the last page. But. I think we wanted to go on C I P conversation and the ARPA conversation.
So when are we going to have another budget meeting then, before we approve the budget?
Well, then we'd have to have it at the end of November.
We have to vote on December sixth.
Uh, yes, we do, we set the T N T.
We, we finalized.
It has, it hasn't been sent out yet.
It has to be finalized by the end of the month. We have to prove it finally, the second meeting, yeah, December, because it has to.
You can continue the public hearing. And make the decision on December eighteenth. That's the last you could do.
Right, but if we aren't going to do it tonight, then. Maybe we have to do that and have it at our workshop.
Well, you'll have the public hearing on December sixth, no matter what, that is the date we set for the truth and taxation meeting. So then you will have a conversation. And then you'd have to, if you don't want to make the decision on that night, then you just move it to continue the hearing, as they say. To December eighteenth for the final decision. Correct?
What's the safe house?
That's was the one you requested.
Okay, that's what I was thinking.
Was the request at that?
I like to move with another meetings because to get this finalized because I was like, I have, I have a town hall meeting and I think all calls today give text messages today here on the city budget. People aren't happy with this, you know, I don't, you know, a lot of them are coming from War Two again today. And I sent it over to Andre. You don't see all this request for it. I get it back. She wants to be back. She's in my word. I learn all. So I'm on War Two. Other person married another one. I got a phone call from another person. They thought actually selling their house, moving out of Wilmer. And on my city hall meeting, my notes from there, one was a guy from out of town. So we're pricing people right, right out of their homes in Wilmer for their taxes. Another one, Wilmer does not have a revenue problem. Wilmer has spending. And with this recession coming up and it's going to be worse and inflation going up, we can't put any more on our taxpayers. We really have to start trimming and cutting a lot, a lot of stuff. And I think one of the things that was tough would be the system we're using that, I don't know what we're paying for the system that we use to vote at our council meetings. Half time doesn't work. If we can save money there, just cut that off. We have to really get back to our list and say, who's going to benefit from the spending? Most taxpayers aren't seeing a benefit right now. Talk of my small engines. He's a little bit over that. He basically would rather give his employees a raise and pay the city more money on property tax.
Well, as
And there's other business owners like that contact me too, that they can't vote and give raises this year because of it. Matt Fryberg got told me on Friday saying now all his rental properties, he's going to have to jack up forty, fifty dollars a month on, on their next lease to do anything. It's Tom. My people can't even hardly afford the rent right now. Now, if I jack up the rate, it's going to make me look like the bad guy now. They're going to have to figure out where they can get forty, fifty dollars a month to cover their food and electricity.
So as you can see up here on the slide, so our actual expenses for twenty twenty-four, we have only increased our expenses by one point two-two percent.
So that actually came up quite a bit. Our, our, we're at almost twenty-five point six percent. I think I pulled out a newspaper article when I put my stuff together that we went from seven point three to over nine million dollars.
A lot of that is, is, is street debt.
Yeah, we went from seven point three to nine point one million dollars, you know, twenty-five point six percent. Two thousand twenty-one, we're at six point one million dollars. We're looking now at over ten million dollars. We're looking at four, four million dollars in, you know, a few years. Our workers out there, aren't getting this type of pay increases out in the public sector.
Well, I think our streets are a bit bad. And that's why we're in this state because for a long time, when our streets weren't getting fixed and people were saving money. We have to fix our streets. That costs money. What I hear out of the public is when are you guys going to fix our streets?
Yeah.
It takes money.
Tell their street gets fixed.
What's such a check? Everybody, yeah. Like the numbers I presented on my budget, you know, what I think was the budget, city grid. Or just go ahead and do.
Presented the budget?
Number wise, where I think the cities that could run off. And that was using two thousand two's taxes of seven point three million dollars. Is what, what they have. We have eight hundred thousand dollars off of this. You're supposed to add on the streets. We threw another eight hundred thousand dollars all we added in the streets before. It's going to start getting, it's going to occur now. Two thousand twenty-two, we had the streets, but twenty-three, we had seven hundred thousand, that'd be one point five million dollars.
I don't know how you can do that though, without guiding public safety in the police department alone, like the budget line for the police department in two thousand and two to two thousand and four. I mean, you know, I've got a topic reading taxes that.
Why, why, why should we be pushing all the stuff that really doesn't, some things that doesn't need on the taxpayers and have our taxpayers reduce their budget? How come the government never steps back and reduces their budget?
Like the police.
They always have it revenue. Oh, yeah, what is good to the workers? What about the people that can't afford it? Do you know?
So we're going to cut our patrols? We're going to cut back on safety? Wilmer will become higher crime like this?
No, I'm not saying that. Look, I don't know how, we can't go back to those numbers, but hopefully. There's plenty of weaknesses. I don't think so because we've been sitting. I'm going to go or I'm going to be prepared for this. I've read this room. I will be both know anything over eight point six million dollars per month.
And that's got us to the point where we're at right now with our streets.
Yeah.
That's exactly why we're where we're at.
Yeah, you got your playground equipment.
Because people wanted to make everybody happy about this not raising taxes, but you can't not raise the tax and fix the street at the same time. You can't have it both ways.
We're still running over what it was at before we got our big entry slash.
We had to start aggressively address our streets.
City clerk.
Because if we're going to correct it.
Wilmer can handle this. Why not raise some taxes? You know, I get calls first, where's the money going to come from, Tom? We don't raise, I mean, how do, well, this is where we have to look at on where we're going to cut, cut stuff off.
Hundred and seventy-five thousand to your playground equipment.
We took away from, from kids' flash. You want to do that again this year? I don't want to cut that. No, I don't. Yeah, but how, how can we go after the kids?
That are three squad cars. What's your primary?
Two squad tires then, you know, like I said, push off the and fire a truck for one year's, make, make a little bit payment. I just don't think it's a realistic option. That's zero percent. I think it is when we had somebody more from the city over twenty-some years that says this can be done.
The inflation that you mentioned too is part of the problem, right? That's nothing we can control. Numbers from twenty twenty-two aren't realistic anymore because of inflation. You mentioned it yourself, right? Like the costs of streets go up because of inflation and then we're buying anything.
I have it. We'll run with that and we'll add another eight hundred thousand dollars on.
I'm just saying like you can't expect any business, any household, any city, anything to be able
I just would give a trust.
Like what it costs to do business, what it costs to run the city, what it costs to run a house in twenty twenty-two is far less than it is today. And that's, that's just the reality of inflation that we're all in.
Yeah, yeah. And there's some people on moving incomes that can't afford it. So have you had them calling you crying, you know, on how they're going to pay their house taxes?
I have, of course, of course, we all have, right? Like, I mean, it's not headline news that no one likes paying taxes. No one around this table likes paying taxes.
We, we have to be able to show them to the taxpayers what they're going to be benefiting from.
Sure. I, and I feel like we do. We've got new streets, right? Like, you know, that list goes on and on.
I feel like every one of these line items is a benefit to the taxpayers. This is a quality of life. This is the, the, what I would say, great community that we live in.
I'm going to start referring to British strike column mutually. You can explain the benefits better than I can.
Then, uh, so changes that we've made, what are the percentages right now?
So the percentages that we've made so far, so in September, the council adopted a preliminary levy of fifteen point zero seven or zero, fifteen points, fifteen percent.
Yeah.
Right now, we are showing a ten point eight-four percent levy increase or nine hundred ninety-six thousand dollars. And that is addition. We're increasing streets. There's a little bit in city hall. That's tax growth. If you look at operating our day-to-day expenses have increased two hundred and fifty-seven thousand dollars from last year to this year, one point two-two percent. There's, I think, a few important factors that have come out of this. The city council is, is, is pursuing and implementing a wage comp study for its employees, city workers. Cheap to do that, but it's a necessity. Another thing that we've accomplished is we're giving the council a balanced budget where you've been, where the council of the city's been operating in a budget deficit or using reserves for the last seven years. So we've made up a million to a million and a half dollars of spending by cutting. We have removed the engineering department budget. That was six to seven hundred thousand dollars right there. So we, we have done our, respectfully, we have done our due diligence and we have cut significantly from our general operating. However, there's other needs that the city put forward and that we've shared with the council, such as a wage comp study, such as increasing street debt, city hall. I mean, just between city hall and streets, that's one point three million. That's never been taxed to the residents before. So I mean, there, there are increased costs. So, so we're at ten point eight-four percent to the general levy. So we, our community has also grown. Our tax base has also grown by roughly, I apologize, roughly a million dollars. About eighteen and a half million dollars tax capacity. So when we include our, we see our general levy going up ten point eight-four percent, but that also includes, doesn't account for growth. So what's the tax impact to the general taxpayer, the resident in town? That's three point four-two percent. So after growth comes out of that, this is an estimate. It's not a, a solid number. It's a moving number. But the, the tax impact for somebody that owns a two hundred thousand dollar home right now, right at this moment in time, is thirty-three dollar increase to their, to the city portion of their taxes. And so that's, you can follow that list down. So even though the general levy will be set at ten point eight-four, the tax impact to taxpayers in Wilmer is estimated to be three point four-two percent. And you can see how that breaks out between the valuation of residential, commercial and industrial properties value that goes.
So when I'm hearing from residents in the community, when I'm having a conversation, someone comes up to me and says, I heard you raised the tax levy ten point eight-four percent. People come up and they say, you raised my taxes ten point eight-four percent, which isn't exactly accurate, right? Like, it's, I mean,
it's accurate because that is how much the general levy went. But the net effect is the closer to that three.
And writing my checks out or, you know, for property tax, you know, it's three point four percent.
That's what we're estimating of growth, yes. It's a city, city portional, county and school are separate from that, from any other increases.
But what do we have to do to get below ten percent for it to ten?
About another hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Right, so.
What she said, I couldn't hear.
Good. One of the things that we we would like to avoid is any negative impacts. Reason I say that is because we're, we're trying to, we're trying to rebuild, trying to kind of rebound from past practices. They have a balanced budget. And so if we go backwards, it just makes it harder to catch up in the future because it's, it's, it's going to, it's going to happen. And we need to need to make sure we're steadily and slowly increasing, not moving backwards because just like everyone else, the cost of doing business for the city does not go down. I think a prime example tonight was city hall. Saw how much city hall or construction prices have jumped over the last three years. Roads aren't getting any cheaper. I just had a meeting on assessments, not assessments, on road, on improvement projects. It was, and it's night. Every one dollar we've received, it's like every nineteen dollars of construction is one dollar we receive at eight. So I mean, that, that's just expensive.
Yeah, and we're looking at ten years of road improvements.
You're looking at more than ten years of road.
Okay, more than ten years.
Yeah, we have a hundred, we have a hundred and
Assessing people all over the place on their, those residents, what means they're going to be done.
But here's how that also happens. So right now, we've only been assessing, it's a ten-year assessment. We've lengthened it out to fifteen because we're doing more. But as, so as each year drops off, those assessment dollars that we had should be going towards road improvements too. So after we get into a fifteen-year cycle of assessments and then this one drops off, then your, your bonding dollars should go to the next twenty-six, the sixteenth year, right? So one drops off, then those bonding dollars go to the sixteenth year. Where it just takes us time to build that capacity because we have, we don't have it. Because for one thing, we were only bonding for about a million to one point one million dollars each year. For now, we're trying to bond for about five and a half million dollars a year. So the one million dollars rolling over into bonding for the one that drops off isn't one to one.
So remember the meeting we're at, we asked the county to show us how they do their assessments, how they figure out their assessments. Is there anything that we can do to help our residents that way?
Increase your tax base. Increase your taxes.
What about their, the different, they had four different ways that they
Well, we don't, we don't. So of that, if you recall.
Uh, yeah, we don't.
We don't have
The wheel.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And we don't have
We don't have any.
Local sales tax that they do.
No, we have our local too.
But that can't be used for streets and it can't be used for any other project than what it already has been. And it can't be used for maintenance. So our local taxes only right now is paid for bonds for our improvements. So and so that's two funding sources that the state, that the county has that we don't have. We do have Minnesota State Aid Street Funding. That's a million dollars a year.
True.
And bonds. I don't think, I don't think we have any other opportunities like, like the county does.
So why can't we get authority to do the wheel? Why can't we do that? Realogy tax? Yeah. That means everybody who's using the road pays. That's what the county does.
And sales tax?
Oh, no, it's not sales tax.
The realogy tax is based on P S O license plates and at the time they renew their license.
Ten dollars. Yeah, but it helps on the cost.
Yeah.
I don't, so I don't know. What do we have to
I don't think, I don't think we have that authority to get that through the state.
So how do we start?
Well, and, and so now the county, on the county side, they would say they're using their funding for the roads within the city to pay for whatever. So they use that funding to upgrade our road. County, state, and roads.
They've got roughly fourteen miles roadway that the county maintains with the city.
I still, still think that there is a way to get this real tax because everybody uses the roads. They should pay for it. It's plain and simple. They should pay for it. That'll help that assessment a lot. I saw the numbers, I saw the numbers the county had and wow. Talk to this. Well, that's what I asked you to ask. They don't present anything. They're extended or, okay, anyway, let's do it.
Um, we did. We just, we talked about this at the, I had a league of Minnesota's board meeting last week. And the, the local sales tax group that's looking, because there's a moratorium on local sales tax. And they're looking at what should be funded, what, you know, all of those types of things. But the conversation also included that the authorization that went to the county to get be able to authorize that half a percent sales tax to pay for streets did not go through that same committee. It went through the transportation committee. And so there, you know, there's probably some homework. I, I, I think the funding, the street funding is broken. And, you know, it does need to be fixed at the state level. And so Um, and, you know, it does need to be fixed at the state level. And so maybe we need to lobby to be. Included in, whether it's regional or different sized communities. I mean, Minneapolis, St. Paul, Rochester, Duluth. Um, they have different funding mechanisms that they're using.
Same.
Yes, yeah.
To do their streets.
And St. Cloud has a, has a group. Regional sales tax that they distribute throughout theirs. And so. We we maybe need to do some homework on how we can change our transportation funding.
Why don't we all call Baker Lang? Just get on them, find out what we can do. I mean, if you don't get on them, they're not gonna get done.
Draft a letter, we'll sign it.
So I guess the question that I'm asking when it comes, you know. So the tax levy is, are we too aggressive on streets for right now?
No. We actually could spend more on our streets. Do some hate for this.
I know, but doing.
I know.
I know.
I agree with, but. Do more, but we just can't afford, you know.
Realistically, we probably can't do all the streets that we've talked about doing next year.
Well, I don't, yeah.
But I don't know that. Would it make any changes if we didn't do one next year?
This, this eight hundred thousand dollars, this is our payment for twenty two, for twenty one and for twenty two. That doesn't include any future projects. That's our current debt service payment for two years of roads.
I mean, it seems to me like. In my mind, I'll preface it with, in my mind, that the only way to lower taxes at this point is to back off the streets. Or not to invest in the future construction of city hall.
Our street debt that we're looking at next year would be backed off of this. Compared to what we put in debt.
So that, this eight hundred thousand doesn't change for the twenty four budget. That is our obligated payment that we need to pay for the next.
The only way that we can lower taxes not to pay for city hall that. If. Other than cutting from.
Yeah, you can do that.
And that's the only option left.
And then you don't have any funding for city hall coming in.
That's why we're in.
And then you change, we are, you know. And then you change the whole dynamic on that.
Right, for what a twenty million dollar building. Over thirty years, it's about six hundred fifty thousand dollars a year.
So we're getting to that point where we're getting for bond payment. So it's.
We're right on.
So is, so if you're doing planning. It's like, no, continue on the plan, right? Because. Next year, if our growth, our population, our property values grow, things like that. We could be. Up to that six hundred thousand dollar mark or six twenty five, whatever we need for. And so now I built in your bond payment into your tax rate. That's, that's, that's binding.
And not to get whatever, not too far into the weeds, but I think, help me out. If it would be fair as far as Dave Baker and Andrew Lang. Their position. Is their region. And so they have to look at what funding has come to this area in the past. And so we're looking at major funding that came for twenty, highway twenty three. And so if you're any other region of the state and you're looking, whoa, Canoe County. Already got this. We already got improvement for two twelve. We already got a bunch of stuff on highway forty. Um. The the realistic expectation that they're going to uh give us anything for our city streets. I think realistically, um, is not there.
But Julie, this is a statewide issue. This is not a Wilmer issue. This is a statewide issue that needs fixing. It's it's no different in any other community. They're struggling the same way.
Right.
Some communities have done a local option sales tax to do their street.
Right.
And they don't like that, but but there has to be dollars some of the fixed transportation. And and the more things that how we grow, the more things we need. And so this, it's not, not like, well, you got it this year, so you have to wait five years now because that's not a, it's everywhere. It's not just us. Transportation funding is broken. It's not a Republican or a Democrat. Issue. Yes, it's a statewide problem. And if they would, if they would sit down and negotiate and look at it that way versus. No, no, or yes, you know, or whatever. I I just think we have to lobby for being realistic that we can't, I, I.
But I think that's where, I think you're aware that every small community and everybody. Is going to need help with their streets, roads. And I, I'm just saying, I don't know what the expectation was in that conversation we were having here. But I, what I was kind of hearing was that they would be able to give us some money towards uh our streets.
No, I ain't got.
So the rest of the council is on our, Julie, that we had.
I know that. I wasn't gonna go there, but okay, but yeah, but that's.
But I don't think we're looking for give us money since Wilmer allow every state, city in the.
Yes. To make them have city kind of transportation funding.
Yes.
Right. But that moratorium that they put on and listening to that committee. I think that they're taking, gonna take away a lot. And there also was a conversation that their problems might be taken away from the county's ability for that also. Which I think is. Be a total detriment. For county. Also.
The wheel to be.
Uh, no, no.
The half tax.
Can you, can you city vote for a wheel tax? And you can, can you circumvent the state and do it all the way?
I don't know. And the wheelage tax at ten dollars is not gonna make. Then it, then that's twenty dollars to everybody with a car in. Because it would be twenty dollars to the county and twenty dollars, or ten dollars to the county, ten to them. But I don't think that the, I don't think the wheelage tax that county's getting is all that great. I don't think it's all that much. I don't recall what it was, but. I want to say it's.
The half percent.
The half percent is where they make, yes.
Like, I guess.
And that's all purchases in the comp.
Yeah. Right, but fifty percent of it comes from.
Right.
So if we make two point five. On a half a percent for our. Bonds for our, our local option sales tax. They're making close to five million.
I got a question for it. Hate to bring this up because I don't want to get into a big discussion on this, but I've been asked.
Not the time to do. Might go for it, save it.
Water charges, utility improvement charge of four dollars. Where's it going?
The city.
Where?
Going in that, that we're taking money on.
Community investment.
Community investment fund, that's where that four dollars is going? I don't want to think of.
All right. Is there a direction you would like staff to go with the numbers that you see?
Or it was listed in the paper here that multiple. People were talking, we never lower. That was in the paper for all people.
Well, we did go lower.
But we needed to lower our lower because uh. I don't know why. I get all the phone calls on. Kind of, kind of, kind of, kind of. I don't know if anybody else is getting it or if I'm the only one speaking up about it, but I'm hearing a lot is. On all this, from my town hall to today, it's mostly been more three. Or three, two and four. In word one, I haven't heard one person out of, out of the sort of word law. But the majority of it's been more four and more two. Or three, been a couple, you know. Given that Halle is over there, your word, but. But the last thing that's talked about is we proved this paper wrote up, multiple members said, we never go down. You know, we have an opportunity here now. Does the post office ever go down? You know, the post office goes up, but they could actually, they don't have to. They could raise up their business rates. They don't. Staff just got what they need.
Are we, are we gonna have another meeting or not?
Yes, I'd say we would have to have another meeting. So I would say November twenty eighth.
We started like five thirty.
Yeah, we can, we can start at. Before the afternoon if you're.
I agree.
Can be the twenty.
Twenty eight. Yes. Tom, Tom's will be back.
I got a question. Charlotte, what happened with that stream? And redo it. They ground it down. I think it was for the curvature, but now they got basketball or court edge overturned.
Are we doing the twenty seven? Sorry, seven is Monday.
Like, because they did it like a week. They, they, they milled off the wearing course. I'm not sure what it is. I want them up to some regularity or something. They was, it has to do with the crown from when they cut it because it was. Well, that much towards the gutter. And then first was. Center where they left it up. So what was doing with the crown?
So it's the meeting, the twenty seventh, the twenty eighth.
But now, now the asphalt.
When they start at five thirty?
We can, like I said, we can start whatever you want. Can we do the twenty eight?
I love the twenty eighth. I can make the twenty seven.
Twenty eight is. Five o'clock. Five o'clock, twenty eight.
Hey.
Here, everybody answered? Okay. Five o'clock, I'll be a little late.
Five thirty?
Five thirty, I can be.
Don't worry about your town.
Five fifteen. Five fifteen.
Five one.
Try and make. So five thirty, you ready?
Five thirty.